Wednesday, September ninth, twenty twenty at six P M. This is our Board of Selectmen's regular meeting. It is being audio and video recorded. It is not being streamed live on Channel Nine, but it will be placed on YouTube and circulated on Channel Nine per the regular schedule. There are no scheduled hearings. Public input, as always, can be provided using the following methods: email, as on the agenda, numbers on the agenda, or via the Zoom link on our posted agenda. And with that, I ask that everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to mention the passing of Lorraine Foley and Joseph White since our last meeting and ask for a moment of silence in their memory, please. Thank you.
Thank you. So for scheduled appointments this evening, our first appointment is right now with the Town of Easton Human Rights Committee for a presentation or and/or discussion. I think we had a couple of questions about how we wanted to do this in Dayton, and so we wanted to speak to some of the members from Easton who serve and have expertise on this topic. And so with that, I would throw it over to our cohort in Easton, and I know there's probably several people, so...
There are, and I'll turn it over to Stephanie.
Sure. I'm happy to put my mask on.
How many Zoom folks would like to move a little bit closer to the selectman?
Oh, he sounds good. Can you... He sounds good. So can you do that? Do you want to... You're like twelve inches apart. Hello. Right, thank you for being patient.
Yeah, you know, we don't have to put our masks on because this is supposed to...
Well, correct. We're not worried about you.
So who is here from the Eastern Human Rights Committee?
The chairman, Mr. Barger, vice chair of the Select Board of Easton, and a representative of the Human Rights Committee.
And Stephanie, the town's veteran committee.
How are you doing? Good training.
So just for the rec... Just for the record, Stephanie's my daughter, so people won't see a conflict or whatever.
Hello.
Nice to see you, Stephanie. She had a movie night last Saturday outside the house, which was fun to attend. Got to see my grand... Got to see my grandkids.
Yeah, I'm very concerned about the town where it's been, yeah, but you were saying we had a movie night at my house last weekend outside.
Yeah.
But Mike said, "Have your grandkids right there," and it's real nice. It's nice. It's nice to be able to hang out with them, so they can...
Very good.
So do you guys have specific questions? I don't know if I missed that part, or if you just want us to kind of explain a little bit.
Uh, do you mind... So my colleagues may have questions. Do you mind, yeah, just starting? I mean, I did read the mission. I read your goals specifically in Easton last week, but if you wanted to recap...
Did you hear anything? That was actually better maybe before.
It was better before?
Yeah, they said they came...
They're having trouble hearing us.
Oh.
Oh, did you use the chat? Can... Do you guys have a chat function?
Yeah.
Hang on.
Can you hear us? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
We certainly can talk about the Human Rights Committee in Easton, give you a little historical data, et cetera. And if you want to... I'm not good with chat functions, so Stephanie will probably have to read them to me if there's any questions.
Absolutely.
The Human Rights Committee was originally constituted in two thousand and nine in Easton. It wasn't very active until two thousand and sixteen, when unfortunately, Easton experienced some unfortunate behavior on certain members of the community, directly in the Muslim community in Easton, which generated some requests to reconstitute the Human Rights Committee, which the Board of... At that time, the Board of Selectmen, now Select Board, agreed to open it up for volunteers. And the basic charge of the committee includes a representative from the Select Board, a representative from the school department, our school committee, a human rights officer from the police department, and seven and four and nine members of the community selected by the Select Board, interviewed by the Select Board on a regular basis. There's a three years, three-year term, they're rotating terms. So that the actual committee is right now consists of nine members, and the human rights officer from the police department, as needed, is involved as well. The group has a specific mission, which I'd be happy to read to you, and I'm sure that Stephanie can provide you the specifics in terms of written document. But it's basically promote Easton's vision of a community that has at its core values: freedom, bigotry, hatred, intolerance, disrespect; to build a stronger, more unified town that respects and recognizes both diversity and our commonalities; to work with community groups and agencies to educate and to promote understanding, to eliminate prejudice and intolerance, and to confront statements and actions that conflict with core values expressed. That's the basic core statement, a purpose, mission, charge of the Human Rights Committee. It has two co-chairs, and it meets monthly. And it has been much more active since two thousand and sixteen, and it has been promoting trainings and performance activities in the community, partnering with groups such as the Lions Club, the O-City YMCA. There's a new group in town called Raising Multicultural Kids, which is a multicultural group of folks who have been promoting racial justice in the town of Easton. And that is one of the charges that the Human Rights Committee has. And it is a... It is a very diverse and very enthusiastic, very creative group of people. I am honored to be the Select Board representative on that committee, and I have a great deal of respect for every member of the committee. Stephanie, if you want to... I don't want to embarrass Stephanie, but if you want to add a little bit of a perspective as a community member...
Yeah, yeah, I think we have a lot of partnerships with, what you were saying, Craig, with all different... We partner with the library, we partner with the sheep pasture in town, a lot of different people. And I think that just kind of brings the community together and gets other people involved in it and having a voice and knowing that it's not just one specific group of people that are trying to have this mission in town. It really... It puts us out there a little bit more. So we, you know, at the sheep pasture, like, for example, a couple times a year when they're doing their events, there's members of the Human Rights Committee that are there to do some type of, like, unified activity with people who choose to as they walk by. Like, we did one with everybody's faces, like, took pictures of it. And so it had a big collage, basically, of everybody's faces to see the diversity within the town and what the town represents. There's been some recent partnership with the library and Raising Multicultural Kids to do, have conversations on racial injustice, specifically having people from town speak. And we've had some book discussions that we've partnered with, Raising Multicultural Kids. So we try to plan, if not monthly, like, kind of quarterly events in the community to have people have a voice and really just to kind of promote the mission. We had signs that "He Has No Home Here" that we could provide to residents in the town to kind of put that message out to people. Trying to think of other things that we've done. But it's a great... It's a great group. I've only been on it maybe seven, eight months, I think, now. Somewhere in January or February I came on, and they were extremely welcoming. And I feel like I'm just trying to understand everything that people do, what everybody kind of, you know, they respected my opinion. Every time I spoke enough or said something, everybody, you know, is welcome and open and that, so... That's why I wanted Craig here, just to be able to speak a little bit more of the history of it, only because I've only been on it maybe the past six, seven months, and to be able to hear the point of view from a Select Board member, to be able to kind of see what their involvement is and what the roles are with other people. But, yeah, that's my thought so far.
So I wanted to open it up to questions. I do have a question, but I want to start with my colleagues. So, selectmen, the chief one?
Sure. So since this group has been formed in Easton...
You may have to get real...
Yes.
You know how we can't hear...
I can actually hear you guys there. Both of you are...
Okay, since... Yeah. Since you formed this group, have you seen an improvement in relationships in town?
Uh, really, anyone?
So I have an idea.
It was good initially, but when you talked, and then when...
Can you hear me?
My dad talked, but I don't know what happened.
Can you hear me at all?
Barely.
Can you hear me better?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, good. So for the third time, since you formed this committee in your town, have you seen an improvement in relationships with different groups? Has there been an improvement?
Yeah, I think so. I think there's been a larger number of people who have become aware of some of the issues that created the Human Rights Committee. There've been more people actively involved in some of the performance that Stephanie was talking about at the NRT and the Lions Club, their Christmas festival. More people have been asking questions about it. And I think that it has done some, made people more aware of some of the issues that the Human Rights Committee is charged with facing and with supporting the diversity of Easton. So I think that, yes, we've seen a change in activity. Unfortunately, there are always, in every town, groups of people who are not willing or interested in participating in those kinds of discussions. And I don't think it's any different in Dayton than it is in Easton.
Yeah.
But I think that that's something we understand and we expect, and we try very hard to engage more and more people in the conversations.
I was just gonna say, just, I'm a resident of Easton. I don't know if they can hear me.
Can you hear Town Administrator Mallory?
Oh, um...
No. Okay, just, you can translate. So as a resident of Easton, I just wanted to mention that there's an increased level of comfort in having those difficult conversations. I feel like we have more of those types of conversations that you don't feel bad asking the question of a person of color or somebody who might have had poor experiences, and there's a platform for that. So I think it has grown by osmosis that there's more discussion about it in the community.
She said, as a resident, so she's a proud Estonian, I guess you would call them, she just said that she has noticed that because of these uncomfortable discussions have started and have been had in the community and throughout the community that she's noticed people are more comfortable in the community and with each other, basically.
Talking about it.
Yeah, speaking openly.
That's very exciting to hear.
Yeah, that's great to hear.
Thank you, Mallory.
You're welcome. Thank you for what you do.
And I think we're always trying to get other partnerships. Like, we recently, there's a bookstore in town here, the Paperback Junction, and we, when we did the book club, we asked that she provide some of the books so that she could get business, you know, herself. So, and we want to move forward with that anytime we need resources like that. And she was great about it, too. So the more that we're just trying to get other partnerships with businesses and that kind of things, I think it just, it helps bring everybody together and just show camaraderie, so... That's, I'm glad that Mallory feels that way, that's good.
So I can do what? And, yeah, you may have to... You have to get, like, you have to get really...
Get my reels going.
Nothing close.
Um, how big is Easton population-wise?
Oh, do you know that answer, Craig? How many, what the population is in Easton?
It's about twenty-four thousand now.
Really?
Yeah. Okay.
Um, you have one high school, correct?
That's correct. Oliver Ames High School.
Right.
Oh, yeah, south... We have the vocational school. Yeah, the vocational school, too, in Easton, yep.
Southeastern region.
Yeah. The, I'm talking to the, I'll call them the town schools, because I know you're a member of Southeastern Regional Health Tech. The, and Mr. County Agricultural School. You have students in Dayton. How many middle and how many elementary?
Oh, let me think about that.
Total, about thirty-six hundred kids in school in Easton. I don't know the breakdown between the high school and the middle schools.
But how many? You have one or two middle schools or more?
Right now, we have, we have...
Self-adjacent.
We have a middle school, and we have two. We have Parkview, we have Center.
Cheryl's here.
All right. We have Parkview and Center, which are kindergarten to third grade. Then we have the middle school, and then we have the high school.
Okay, and do you have, I'll say, programs in the schools? Or have the schools been introduced to your committee? Or have you partnered with them? I know you said you had a member of the school committee on your committee, but have you made presentations at any of the schools?
I don't know if we could call it presentations, but we do have a calendar, a religious calendar that is provided to the schools every year and that the superintendent passes down to the staff so that people become aware of the different, the diversity in town, the different kinds of reasons kids might not be in class. And there are many of them are not the non-traditional kinds of groups that haven't been in Easton prior to this. And I apologize for my voice. I have no idea why it keeps going away, but...
It's better than last night, Craig. You're doing better than last night. Yeah, so we do a, yeah, like you said, a calendar, and that gets put on the school website, and it gets passed down through each of the administration at the different schools. So we have kind of parted to provide that to them. I don't know if we offered that or if they came to us to get that, but I know for the past couple of years that we've been doing that. And whenever things that we want brought up, the school committee member brings it back to the school department and addresses kind of anything or any concerns, a way that we could, you know, be involved with something. That's what I know is of Michelle's role, so...
Did I understand...
We do have, there is a principal, there is a superintendent's group, and we are represented on that group by one of our members.
Okay, did I understand when you started that the first incident in two thousand and sixteen, was it religion-related?
It was a unfortunate situation where some of the members of the community were critical of the Muslim religion and the Muslim folks, which created a little bit of uproar. If you were to Google "Easton in two thousand and sixteen," it wasn't a pretty picture, unfortunately, which then prompted a lot of us to get involved.
Okay, so that's what I... I had a little trouble hearing you, but I thought it had a religious connection, and that's what the situation was. Without getting into, without getting into specific incidences, what other kinds of events or circumstances has the committee addressed? Or have you not had similar incidents, so you really focused on education?
More focused on education, although there have been a couple of instances where things have been brought to our attention. And our responsibility is to refer that information to the human rights officer in the police department. We don't intervene in those situations. But we use that as a teaching tool for the greater community.
I have a question.
You're welcome.
I have a question just about there. I have the boring logistical question. Yeah, I'm that guy tonight. Can you still hear me? Okay, good, yes. There was laughter. How did you... I guess I have a two-part question. How did the committee... So I guess this would be for you, Mr. Barger. By the way, it's nice to see you again. How did you arrive at nine members? Or how did the... How was the decision made to create the committee with nine members? And then how was the decision made on arriving at who was chosen? Meaning, was diversity of ideas, diversity of race, religious background? Was that all considered when you chose members for appointment?
The answer to the first question, there is a range of nine to twelve members. We currently have nine. It is helpful from my perspective to have an uneven number so that you never get a tie vote if you have anything you want to vote on. And the way we've chosen people is we put it out to the public that there are openings on all our committees, including the Human Rights Committee. People fill out an application, and then it comes before the Select Board, and we personally interview, as a group of five Select Board members, we interview people and make those determinations based upon our beliefs about what they are capable of, what their interests are, and whether it fits into the Human Rights Committee mission and statement of values.
I like that. And then I guess my last question, again, boring question, is how was it decided that there would be one Select Board representative, one school committee member, and one civil rights officer? Like, what was the logic behind that specific proposition?
There are a number of committees in town that are represented by members of the Select Board and/or the school committee. And it's just like, it's a function of, we have a lot of committees and trying to spread ourselves too thin. So I may be on three different committees, and my colleagues may be on two or three as well. So it's just a question of trying to spread people around to all those committees to have representation on them.
Okay. Did you have any more questions?
I have no other questions, no.
Selectmen, do what?
No.
Well, if there are no further questions, I just want to thank you all very much. We will be later on, and you can stay if you'd like, but by no means are you obligated. We will further discuss under old business establishing a Dayton Human Rights Committee. So I just...
Anything we can, Mr. Chairman, anything we can do to be helpful, put you in touch with the vice chairs of the committee, or myself, or Stephanie, we'd be delighted to help. We've actually been working a little bit with Mansfield. They're considering it as well. So I think it's something we're happy to help out if you think our input is valuable.
Thank you, yes, absolutely. We will definitely be in touch, or whomever the Select Board representative, if we establish the committee, will definitely be in touch and using our Eastern Human Rights Committee neighbors as a valuable resource, I would assume. So thank you very much.
Awesome.
Thank you for inviting us to work tonight.
Absolutely, yeah. Thanks for the opportunity.
Absolutely.
Bye, Stephanie.
I did just want to open up. Is there anyone who wanted to comment under public input on the Human Rights Committee? You can unmute yourself. Mr. Woods, I did have to mute you. There was some background noise. So anyone who wants to unmute yourself now to give public input, feel free. And then we'll give it a second, and then move on. There's also this waiting room.
I know. I don't like that it forces you to do it these days.
I know.
So I guess now we're...
Nope, okay.
Is this a trivia question? Kristin, I saw one in the chat. Do residents read down to the committee?
Yeah.
Do residents have an issue?
Yeah, I just was curious. Do residents in the community... You kind of did touch upon it a little bit, Craig, in what you would do, but I was wondering if people did actually, you know, maybe they don't feel they can talk to certain people. Do they come to you if an issue arises? You know, whether, whatever that issue may be.
We certainly encourage that. We've had a couple of instances where people have come to us. And as I indicated before, we don't intervene in those situations.
Right.
We simply provide the police with the information if they don't already have it or if it arises at that level. Then we try to incorporate those kinds of instances in the trainings that we do and the activities that we undertake as a committee.
Right, right. Okay.
Any else, Stephanie?
No, I was just gonna say, I know that we, like, you know, when certain incidents happen, we kind of come up with a response, put it on the town page or, you know, just to try to support whatever the incident might have been that happened. And I think, I mean, if people, Craig, is it that they email on the... Because I've seen that on the town page and the website, but basically, they email the Human Rights Committee. Does that go to the chairs? Say, like, if a community member had an issue, it would just all of a sudden call me? You know what I mean? So I know it has to go through, like, a chain. They email through the webpage, right? And that, I guess, then goes to the chairs? Okay. I just wanted to...
There's nothing that says we can't be approached as individual members if an incident comes up. It'll be accessible to people as well.
Yeah.
And then you would, if someone were to, say, reach out to Stephanie in her capacity as a member, the expectation would then be that Stephanie would forward that to the committee at large for a discussion at, you know, a future date?
Yes, yes. Or if it were something that were particularly onerous or significant, then we would turn it over to the police department, or those kinds of behaviors.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, I had somebody reach out to me with something, and I just ended up getting ahold of the chairs. That's how it happened with me, anyway. And then we had a phone call about it and brought it up for the next meeting. But, yeah, obviously, if it's like a legal issue or a policy or something like that, we would bring it to...
Yeah, right. I was thinking, how often do we meet?
Oh, once a month, they do, once a month. Yep.
Once a month, yep.
And then, you know, as I would assume if something happens, as need, you know, you might call a special meeting.
Yep, we've done that before, too, yep.
Awesome.
And I think there's a commitment of at least maybe five meetings you have to kind of tend to be a member. Is that correct, Craig? I don't know if it's five or seven. There has to be so many.
Yeah, the charter actually says that we meet at least five times a year, but we've been meeting every month, every month.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much. Of course. And again, I do just want to give the public a chance to weigh in, ask a question of our Eastern colleagues or the Board of Selectmen as well. So I do just want to give them a moment as well. And you can feel free to unmute yourself if you have a question.
I'm not sure if it's discussed, getting picked on and off the internet. But if something happens in the town, say, you know, like, when the boy was killed by the doctor, like, would you guys, like, for the outreach for the community or, like, any special therapy or any, like, community-based social...
Well, through our human services director, they're the ones that hear that kind of situation, because they're the professionals. We should certainly provide input, but we're not the professionals.
Does the committee sponsor any kind of an event during the year? Like, a public info meeting or when we used to be able to get together and have a cup of coffee? Some kind of a public thing where new people in town could come and just meet the committee?
Ebony, you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we did, I don't remember what it was called. It was a dinner with strangers. Is that what it was called, Craig? That was before I came on.
You went to the Strangers?
Dinner with strangers, yep. So we did that at a restaurant in town and just invited people to come and, you know, meet some of the members and just talk as a community and just like-minded, you know, individuals to just kind of pull up a chair and meet somebody or have a conversation with somebody you've never talked to before. I don't know if there was any other kind of... I mean, we're at, you know, different festivals, and we've gone to the Lions Club, and they had a dinner to be a part of that. I don't, they had speakers or a raffle or something. I missed that one. It was actually my dad's birthday event, I think, so... But I know, I know, you went, Craig. It was March. But I know that we did something with them, too.
Well, we certainly weren't held out against.
Try to get, to get people's exposure to the Human Rights Committee as well. As I said, the O-City Y, the Lions Club, the library, Raising Multicultural Children or Kids, those different groups.
Yep.
We have a very active O-City YMCA in town. They've been incredibly supportive and involved in a lot of our activities.
We keep an ally, we call it an ally kind of email list. So anytime we, you know, have something that we want to do in the community or talk to, we put that on an email list and get them to ask for feedback around certain things, too, about certain events and stuff. So we, everybody that's an ally on it could just be members of the community. It could be some of the partnerships that we have with, you know, places. But we keep an active ally email list just to put things out at different events to get people interested and aware.
Awesome. Well, if my colleagues don't have any further questions, we would like to keep on our schedule. But I do want to, there was a lot of interest, and I just think that that shows sort of where I think our town is moving. So I just want to thank you so much for advising us and giving us some counsel on how, might be, what might be the best way for us to do this in Dayton. So I do want to thank you for sending your...
Thank you for providing us.
No problem, anytime. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You was right. You was right. Thank you. Absolutely. Yeah, that audio, one of our tech people. I saw them making stares, I'm like, oh lord, they didn't hit us.
Well, I think it's on you, so thank you so much.
Okay. Mr. Commissioner, thank you so much. I believe it's just my agenda here. Yeah. We are going to discuss the town hall at the level renovations. And you have graciously, a rendering, if you will, of the old Sossen meeting room. So I want to give you the floor so you can present.
So I wish I had one to show you, but this truly is point one in the project. In order to create the spaces needed to expand the additional offices, the area that you all so graciously gave up needs to be converted into new office space. So what you have before you is what we discussed. We are going to separate that area into two spaces. It's going to be, one, it's going to be the neutral or transient office that should be used by anyone who does not have a permanent office in Town Hall. There's also going to be some file cabinet space that will be allocated to that particular room. And then the remainder of the room will be converted into what we believe is going to be the accounting office, which will have two town employees and logistically be right next door to the Andy Karen Selectmen's Office, which I think works very well when we talk about efficiency and effectiveness of town government. So what I'd like to talk about tonight in detail is getting this project moving by getting into that space, doing the necessary demo work, reconfiguring the space by constructing walls, and talk about fit and finish. I know we talked about last week a few themes at the meeting with respect to carpeting, no carpeting, et cetera, et cetera. So I'd like to have the opportunity now to talk to you about your thoughts as to how you want to see this, this project progress. And I'd like to keep in mind that whatever we decide to do, we'll probably carry through with the rest of the project, so we want to be consistent. And we want to make sure that we get off on the right foot. In addition to what I've just said, I indicated that the door will be removed from the hallway area, which is the foyer where the ramp up clock is located, into this new neutral space. And I think that is, does serve two purposes. One, it creates that space that's more inviting, it's not behind a closed door, people can leave in their incompetence. And the second thing is, with our report that came in for accessibility deficiencies, those doors are non-compliant. So by removing that one door to a public space, we can check that box off, it's no longer an issue. So with that said, I'm willing to discuss it. Any questions? Brainstorm?
I want to be orderly about this, just because there is, there's a couple of things going on here. So you said, one was the demo work, two, sort of like reconfiguration, wall construction, three, fit and finish. So I want us to just, let's do fit and finish last, because that would include like carpet. So let's have that discussion last. So I want to open it up, did you want to?
I, I don't know where mine fits, I just have a question, so I'm sorry. So this L shape is rather large and we have a storage problem, just, I think towns in general historically always could use more storage due to what we always have to keep. So I was wondering if we could kind of put another chunk to the rear, and I drew little dotted lines, to the rear of the shared office, the neutral office, for storage for even more storage capability, put some shelving in there maybe, or more filing cabinets? Because that closet, I mean, it's limited, it's constricting, so is that a possibility? Or is that mess with your, like, I guess first question is, is there a reason the cutoff is here? Is it square footage? I don't know.
There's two reasons. The wall can move about a foot, but that's it because of the closet locations. The closets I want to use for filing cabinets.
Yep.
Whether it's in the neutral office or in the town hall office, a lot of them have cabinets. With the current needs of the town hall office, I took some measurements of the current filing cabinets. And that would only need that one long wall, as you walk into the space.
On the left.
File cabinets on the right or the left. So I think although it looks large, because it's L-shaped, square footage-wise, it's not going to be much bigger than what they have now.
Okay.
It does give them a little growing room, which I think is the ultimate goal here, is we want, we don't want to take some, we want space and put it into exactly the same space.
And have the same problem.
So we want to try and have some elbow room wherever they go, whichever office we will be.
They need like, they need to have some storage.
To answer your question directly, I am conscious of the fact that we need storage space. I think those answers could be, given when we start moving it to the lower level.
Okay.
I want to create a storage space like this, is the copier room, copier room upstairs, where it's going to be, you know, newly made, that could actually potentially store space for filing cabinets for daily use items.
Sure.
But stuff that we don't need all the time, I'd like to use storage downstairs for archiving, et cetera, et cetera. Because obviously we don't need them and we don't need access to them, so there's room somewhere we don't, we don't need to be every day.
Great.
So I am cautious of that and will take into consideration.
Thank you.
You're on.
It's open, so you can ask, I'm sorry.
Sure. So we have talked in the past that we make sure we get the ADA coordinate involved in this. I'm just concerned for that smaller, the neutral office, that we can get a wheelchair in, they're able to move around.
Right.
The desk, whatever desk we put in there should be a desk that someone with a disability can use.
Right. Yeah. So what I, this is how I foresee this process happening. Once we get the approval from the Board of Selectmen, we now put a permit together for the project. Through the permitting process, I'm going to bring the ADA coordinator into the discussion so that he is fully aware of what we're doing and we can ensure that it checks off all the boxes.
And, I'm sorry, your concern was, like, would there be enough, so would the table be ADA compliant and then would there be enough room for someone?
Enough rooms and a wheelchair. But that's something, if you're going to get the ADA coordinate, I'm sure there's something there.
And you would work out, like, you would have an idea of like how big of a table you want, how much space is there where the table, so you would work at, like, given the...
Yeah, this room went on with the lodge gatherings. This room is just for a few persons only. And to answer your question directly, yes, my furniture is still worth taking into consideration. The table, I don't know if we'd buy a round table or conference table as supply, but we could certainly use my skills to try and modify it to make sure it is, so.
Will the cabinet, will the file cabinets have a counter like you have downstairs for workspace?
Not these offices at all. That wasn't taken into consideration.
So what will be on top?
Well, the cabinets that the assessors, I'm sorry, the counting office currently has, big tall cabinets, they're not according to each other.
Oh, okay, I underst, oh, right, I understand.
So they actually get the benefit of an extra drawer up.
Yeah, okay.
But with that in mind, I do have some ideas for the project as it goes through the phases of doing something similar to what I did downstairs for the collector treasurer clerk's office. Because there will be a new counter for the clerk treasurer clerk's office. That would be similar to the one downstairs.
Everything aside, I don't actually really have any questions. I just, we don't find that disrespectful, I just, it's very self-explanatory to me. So did I have a question about the storage? Because I also felt like, just in the drawing, which is not shown to scale, it looks like there's a lot of extra room, so I understand.
No, and I'm not, this is only one small portion of it, but it's instrumental in making this work, because I need this space down to move offices.
Yep.
So.
Did you have a question, Slak Magulov?
What are the dimensions of the whole room? I necessarily break down, I don't have my role here, so...
Twenty-four by twenty-six.
Oh.
If all of the offices on that side was twenty-four D, I'm sorry, twenty-six D.
Twenty-six, yeah.
By, and this was twenty-four Y, right?
Yeah, okay.
So.
And you mentioned the gooding clock, we're not doing anything with a good, okay.
I was actually gonna have that.
Yeah, go ahead.
No way.
Foyer stays the way it is.
I don't have any other questions.
I guess my, I guess I do have one, but it's more just based on the drawing. This in the middle here, in between the two doors, the one that would be removed and then the one that stays, that's the closet, right?
Right.
Okay.
There are two closets here and the gooding clock actually takes up some of the space in those closets, I'm not sure if you're aware, so.
No, you can't see that.
Yeah, it's recessed.
The closets are not as big as they look.
No.
Which is why the other wall spaces is required, to make sure everybody has room for filing cabinets, so. And you know, as you know, I do everything as a design builder, if we look like we need a little more space in the neutral office, then we'll certainly make adjustments. But I just wanted to give an idea of how I usually basically did it up to make sure it can work for both needs.
Thank you.
If we can get to the flooring then.
Yes, yeah, that's a good point.
Yes, I, I do not like carpeting. I think, you know, especially with COVID-19, it's difficult to clean, so I'm more in favor of a flooring, floor laminated, floor or whatever is best, that something's going to last a good twenty, thirty years. Similar to what you got downstairs in this building here. That's my opinion, I don't know what else.
I don't have a preference either way. This is our new building, so.
What I do want to, before you ask your, and then right after this, because the question is for you, and then you can ask your question. How do you guys feel as like employees who, like, I'm not there, you know I hate the carpet, but, but I don't have an opinion on if it's replaced with better carpet or if it's not carpet? So how do you feel as like people walking on those floors?
So I was actually going to bring up noise control for, carpet absorbs the noise, so I have that, and then it's easier to move things around if they ever move their desk or what have you. Also chairs on roly, roly wheel, roly wheels, that sounds silly. But chairs on wheels are better on carpet, so I actually like the setup that this building has where the public spaces, that aisle is, is it the floating floor, is that what you mean?
Yes.
So that with the square carpets, the squares, I actually really like that.
So carpet tiles.
Thank you, so the carpet tiles. Thank you for giving me the vernacular for this. I think that carpet belongs in an, in an office just because of like audio, if the phone rings, it's just a little bit easier, so. My own preference would be to have carpet there, if I, if it were mine.
My preference is just if it's going to be carpet, to have it not be old, like, so it look, you know, it looks nice. And this is, that carpet's been there forever, it's before us, so I'm not being like pejorative about it. But my only concern with carpet is that when it does get worn out, it does concern me, is someone going to like jazz ankle on it, like that, you know how it gets frayed?
Like downstairs.
So I do have those concerns. I know it's not like end of the world, but I do worry about that when carpet gets frayed. Those are my two questions. Slak Magulov?
I would prefer carpet myself, simply because what you're looking at in that building is probably original, it was built in the seventies. And yes, as walls came up and walls went down, patches were made. And if there were areas that frayed, yeah, they were patched. But I really believe, number one, if that were not a carpeted foyer, it would be like a tunnel with echoes and everything else, that's a very, very high ceiling. I think the noise of people walking through there would be a distraction. I don't agree that keeping hardwood or some other form of flooring is easier as far as maintenance goes. If you have, whether it's wood or some kind of a tile or whatever, it's got to be washed all the time. I mean, I mean, I don't have a carpeted bathroom, rest assured that floor gets washed frequently during the week. I also think that for overall comfort and the fact that, let's picture that upstairs of the Town Hall with no walls and no furniture. You're going to put the same carpet in from one end to the other. So now the walls are there, the furniture's there, you can't, you can't have a patchwork. So I think that because of the foyer and the height of the ceilings, carpeting is the way to go. And carpeting, there's carpeting in our house, we didn't put it there, but it's been there since we bought the house, and it gets cleaned, it gets steam cleaned. And so I would support carpet.
My only thing with carpet is that if we're going to do carpet, and again, I really, I'm not like weaseling out, I really just don't feel very strongly about it, I feel like you do, like, I just want it to be a color that's not going to get, like, look dirty. It's going to be dirty, people are going to...
You don't want it to be white or tan.
No, please, something like what's downstairs.
I was just going to say that.
That's going to go in that normal building board.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not even thinking about color at this point.
About that, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. So I think they're all valid points. I understand Slak Magulov's concerns. The carpeting that we used downstairs, I don't know if you recall, it was fairly expensive. It was commercial grade carpet, which rolled back the most part, it's wearing like iron, you can't see anything, you know? And we do work pretty diligently downstairs, all over the place. There's no wear marks whatsoever. The other thing is because it's carpet tile and they were keeping it frayed or something, a tile can be replaced fairly easily. The other thing with carpet tile, and I know this should be a deciding factor, when you do a phased project like this, it's very easy to do a portion of the building versus the whole thing, because you don't have to worry about die-lass. Die-lass change significantly between carpets. Rolled carpet's very susceptible to color variations. But the tiles, because they change orientations, it's very hard to see a shadow. Plus it's a lot easier logistically for the installers to do, okay, let's do this area, and then I move them, the accounting office out, now that area can be done, and then we leave a termination line and the tiles just bump right up against it when I do the next phase. So it actually works pretty well. Town administrator, that does have a valid point, I have been in remodels where we got hot floors and there is a, you can deal with that, with tapestries on walls, tapestries on ceilings, things like that. I can tell you personally, I would enjoy my time in my office as much if I didn't have carpet around my desk. And just to me, it doesn't feel institutional. So that's just a preference that I can tell you as, as an employee. So I think it may be a hybrid, maybe the solution, like we did downstairs, maybe a little more, you know, hard floor that next door than I have downstairs. But, you know, for this particular discussion, if we decide to go carpet, maybe in the office and hard in the conference area, that might be, that might be a solution. But I would want to make that decision now, because now I would carry that through to the hallway, et cetera, et cetera.
So I feel like sometimes I don't grasp the concept fully. So what are our options here? We have carpet, like all carpet, so like one roll carpet that's all the same part and it gets cut and fits the room, that's one option. Another option is the carpet tile. And then the third option is this hybrid.
Right.
Okay. What is the most expensive? In your, I know we don't have dimensions.
What I did downstairs, the carpet tile.
It's nice.
And it, it looks phenomenal and it's wearing very well. And I can tell you, I can't speak to the tax payers, but we have nothing but confidence with the tax payers.
Yeah, we only have them next door.
So I, you know, I think the tax payers are happy with what we did downstairs, so. I don't suspect that they would have any issues with seeing the same thing next door. Quite frankly, the carpeting was a big part, carpeting in electric infrastructure was a big part of the cost expenses for next door. So, you know, but, you know, that's why we're here, we're here to discuss it, what do we want to do?
What is the flooring underneath?
Concrete.
It's just concrete. What was it downstairs?
Concrete.
Concrete, okay. So lay the nicely.
Actually downstairs is a hybrid of concrete, we would, there's maybe a bit of above downstairs.
It can lay right on concrete, the carpet.
No, no, it's okay, I feel like it was answered my question. And what is the floor on that first, the upper level of Town Hall?
Concrete.
Okay. That's surprising.
Well, it makes sense, because that carpet is so flat at this point, it just looks like it was rolled on. But I think Slak Magulov is right that the foyer with the high ceiling, we'd have to put more stuff in there to, to absorb that sound. Like, just even in this room, like, I'm back home.
My other question would be, and I know this is like a million years ahead, but if we were to do this hybrid method, which I like downstairs, is that going to gel with what's the carpet tile in the lower level of Town Hall? Like, if we had hybrid upstairs, like, is that all going to look okay?
So I think that's just color selection, but, uh, the other thing is you can, that's a meeting room, so in my opinion is freestanding.
Okay.
So if there were change between the tile and hallway, or maybe it was spial or plank flooring, hard flooring in the hall, in the, in the hallway, once you get to the doorway of the meeting room, you expect a change anyway.
Okay.
So I think psychologically, it works.
Okay.
We know on the board they mentioned that they have carpet in the bathroom, that's not code anymore, right? You can't have carpet in the bathroom?
Not in commercial bathrooms, no.
Oh, but even in a home though, I thought you put it.
No, she doesn't have.
No, in a single family home, no. In a rental, yes, in a rental, because the public health, uh, regulations kicking, we need washable surfaces. But a single family home, there's no prohibition.
There is kitchen though, is that, is the ki?
Kitchen, yes, yes.
So if, I mean, if, do you know if that carpet is from nineteen seventy-nine, the carpet that's, when the building was built?
Is it original for number one?
I don't know that, that that carpet's ever been replaced.
To me, it doesn't look like it, but you know how I don't love that.
I think it is, I don't know that for certain, um, but that puts the carpet in at forty years old. Um, I, I, I think it's original. Cause commercial grade carpet wears much differently than residential carpet. So to get twenty-five, thirty years out of the carpet, commercial building is pretty commonplace, so.
Yeah, so I'm still going with the flooring floor, but if it's gonna make it be historical, it should be shag carpet over there since nineteen seventy-nine.
Green, green, nice.
Yeah, or puce, puce would be nice.
We had orange.
If you still had an office, we could accommodate that.
We could've extended the sewer commissions carpet, but now you're not.
Get some lava lamps, like, to decorate the desks, yeah.
Okay, so we need to come to a consensus, um.
The break room, I would assume that's not gonna be carpeted, that's not practical.
We don't want people barefoot in the break room.
Break room, copy room, um, obviously the bathrooms, that would all be hard flooring. Uh, you know, with the traffic in the hallways, the high ceilings do concern a little bit, but we might be able to do some tapestries or something in, you know, in those areas. So, um, you know, I think, I think the, my vision would be walk into a foyer that's, um, carpeted or maybe carpeted and planking. And then you walk down the two hallways that are hard flooring, and then that carries into the break room, copy room, bathrooms.
I love it, that's what I'm doing, that's what I'm doing.
Then when you get into the offices, it transitions to carpet tiles.
How about that?
I'm okay with that. I can't think that foyer should also be that flooring floor, like, just there.
Okay, yeah.
He wants the shag.
With square, snow and stuff like that.
Ironically, the foyer is the last thing to get done, so we got plenty of time to pick up that.
And you can put like a carp, like a, um, one of those creepy carpets for like people that walk in, maybe have rain or, and there's shoes.
A water hog.
I'm not.
What if they put?
Water hogs.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm not sure if you're aware, but downstairs in the vestal view when you walk in, that's what that carpet is.
Right, right.
Yeah, that, that's rubber backed, very thick, water cannot get through it, it is super resilient. Um, so, yeah, we, we need to do that here downstairs.
How do we feel about his suggestion, which I can, I can't agree with.
I'm, I'm okay with the hybrid, you know, I, I would prefer, uh, all the offices have, uh, the flooring floor. However, I don't spend as much time as town administrator or our administrator, uh, executive administrator, so, uh, I'm gonna go with what they're saying, but I, I do want the hybrid, similar to what we got downstairs.
So specifically for these two rooms, you have a long distance office area, which is sounding like we go carpet tile. But then you have the other area, which potentially could be a public space. So are we thinking hard floor for that space as well, or are you thinking carpet in there too?
My concern about long halls and large open areas is noise.
Okay.
UMass Lowell took over a number of big mills up in Lowell that were textile mills. Similar to what they have in Fall River and our medical offices. And they had the floors like this, they gleamed like ice. The first thing they had to do was buy thick runners to put them down those halls, because it sounded like a herd when people came in. Now, these were, this was office space that was rented, so it wasn't the public coming and going, it was employees. And in the end, yeah, it was beautiful, we had, we had giant windows, you know, floor to ceiling. And we had brick walls exposed and those gorgeous mill floors, those big old planks that were, were sanded down to look like this. But after they went through all of that, they realized, you know what, should've put carpet down, because now they had to go out. Not only did they spend the money to do the floors, then they had to go out and buy these long, long runners that went the whole length, cause you didn't want people walking on the floors. So, you know, and another thing, the people that work on the first floor of town hall, maybe somebody should've asked them, what do you think, all right?
I just did that.
They need to get the information.
Did they, the, you work on the first floor?
Well, the, the treasure collector office.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about all of the people on the first floor.
So that treasure collector, I call it the pod, they've been, we've talked about this for unfortunately a couple of years. Um, but we've talked to them, and then I know that you've consulted each office about the size requirements that they need, so. I believe they've been consulted, um.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're gonna spend that time getting a poll as to what people want, because, uh, we change, our employees change, and they may think differently, you know, two years ago. But the flooring floors, there's a backing on it, it's not just right onto the floor, you know, I put it in my porch, it's, it's rubber, it's cushion. Doesn't make that much noise, now, uh, I'm not sure if that's what Mrs. Goulart was talking about, if it's the same type of floor, or is it hardwood floor? This makes noise, this, you know, you're working on this floor here, but the flooring floors.
We have that in our kitchen, we just remodeled.
I don't think I know what a folding floor is.
Yeah, I'll Google it. The only concern I have.
It's less loud than this, I would say, which, it's less loud than a real hardwood floor.
So the only concern I have with the folding floor is I'm not sure that that has commercial applications. I have to check with the manufacturers. I, I see it used extensively in remodels and residential. I don't know if it's, it has commercial applicability, so I have to check. You may know better than me, I don't, I don't.
Well, I entered like my doctor's office, I made all the floors, uh, all these floor floors, and I'm sure they wouldn't go for that expense. But, you would, you know, we would have you check that out for us before we went for that expense, so.
So if I'm, if I'm getting the gist of the selectment, it seems like at least, at least this part here, carpet tile is the way to go. And we can talk about the hardwood or the hard floor, folding floor for the foyer, the hallway areas, and the break room, uh, copy room, but across the bathrooms, we'll have some kind of hard floor. That may be the tile in bathroom, so.
You know, like you said, the hallway, that's kinda like the last thing that's gonna be done, so.
It is.
I think Northern Green, I think, carpeting the tiles in the offices, how we.
Okay, that's good, that's, that's all I need to run with this.
Well, I don't wanna put words in.
Did they, did the employees on the first floor indicate that they were looking, or they would prefer carpet? When I say carpet, it could be tiles, or it could be carpet carpet.
I think the expectation is carpet, because that's what went downstairs here.
And they liked what they saw?
And then the, and then, um, also carpet tiles in the lower level meeting room. And it, they both, they came up great, they, they looked fabulous, so I think that's expectation.
That's what I was looking for, they said they should be asked, I think that considering, they, they're the ones that work, they're day in, day out. But if, if some kind of, um, carpet or tile, a square carpet tiles, that's all I wanted to know was, what did they think? Cause everyone I know, see downstairs, loved it.
Mumbling, yeah.
And there's a lot of talking that goes on during the day, talking on the phone, talking to other people about payroll or whatever, uh, like come up during the day. So, um, having something to absorb the sound is important, especially on groups that work closely together. So, um, in this case, the town accountant, there's two offices, uh, two employees that share the office. If one's on the phone, you know, it can't really echo, it won't work well.
In the renovation changes on the first floor, are we gonna do something about heat controls?
I'm sorry, keep controls?
If it keeps working, the community is doing a lot of programmable thermostat, right?
So, along.
Cause it would be in this little room, right?
So I'm meeting with them starting next Monday, and, uh, we have a schedule laid out. So I am going to demand that the thermostat be relocated, they don't belong in closed offices, first of all. Um, and then I'm gonna work with them on where the best location should be. Uh, also going to look into, uh, what we call adjustable diffusers, where we can adjust the flow, the airflow in each, in each office. And then over time, we can modulate the amount of temperature in the offices as things progress. It won't be instantaneous, but as time goes on, if we see, hey, this area is a little bit warmer than the other, we can follow back with diffusers. It may require mic input a little bit, I don't know if I can buy a shelf made unit to go right in those openings. So we may have to lean on him a little for, to make some transition diffusers, but, yes, it is gonna be, it is going to be addressed.
Are there gonna be upgrades to the bathrooms upstairs?
Yes.
Very good.
Yes, and there'll be no more washing dishes in the bathroom.
Okay, we are fifteen minutes behind the schedule, so I want us to vote on this. Um, should we, um, how should we do this?
Vote on the carpet or select?
No, just accept the plan as presented.
Yeah, and I don't tend to pick the colors, we will later, we will bring the colors.
Sure, like you did with, you gave us the colors and you chose like those like engel shell and moka or whatever it was. I remember that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are you entertaining motion?
Yes, absolutely, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the plan as presented this evening. And that, that we get a progress report from the building commissioner at a future meeting.
I will, uh, second that motion with the understanding that there may be some variation of this, might change slightly.
Yeah, he can update and he'll let us know.
Yeah, any changes, yeah, just to keep us abreast.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Would you?
Uh, so we have a motion and a second, and, and under discussion, as part of this motion is what you said about the carpet tile, right? All that's recorded in this, okay, just making sure. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstentions? The ayes have it and that motion passes. I just wanted to thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, and good work, uh, back there. Cable kit, I don't know if they can show it, but it looks good.
Still under construction.
Yeah, but that's okay, it, there was nothing there before.
Moving the bench is like brilliant, I, I can't get over it.
It's like magic, like you come in and it's here.
It is amazing.
It looks great in this current state.
I know, this distressed look is awesome.
I mean, I wanted to look all, I wanted to be moka painted, but, um, it looks fabulous, like, it really does. I love that you saved the bench, by the way, I kept meaning to tell you about it.
Yes, it's amazing.
Awesome. Okay, um, now we have a sidewalk project update.
So we don't, um, this, so Mr. Ferry is on, away.
Yep.
And he requested to be on here, so I don't know exactly what, uh, he was going to say, but.
I can give you an update on it.
Nancy, uh, excuse me, Select McGooler has an update.
Uh, so in lieu of Mr. Ferry, and I hope you're enjoying yourself, Mr. Ferry.
He's not watching.
This is for when he wa-
Victoria vacation.
This is when he watches the rerun and wants to know what we said about it. Only good words, Mr. Ferry. Uh, the sidewalk project is on Somerset Avenue. It's been, uh, going for, this is the second week. Uh, it's close to being finished. That will be the completion of the three location project that we had. And this, the Somerset Avenue is the last money we got, a hundred and sixty-seven?
Hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, so all three of those were, were grant funded. Pearl Street, um, Center Street, and, um, Somerset Avenue. Uh, so, uh, Somerset Avenue will be wrapping up shortly. And if you haven't been down that area, I know the road's been closed periodically. But the sidewalk's gonna look like the sidewalk that's on Center Street, uh, from Somerset Avenue West. It's the dock with a, with the dock berm, I'll call it, that's not the right word, but, uh, and then I will just say, the next project we will be reporting on would be boat ramp. Uh, because we've, uh, set up an appointment with, uh, a property owner and the town administrator, Mr. Ferry and I. And I've got one more property owner to catch up to, so that we can set those meetings up, but that'll be the next project.
The meetings are pertaining to easements?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And you'll, um, request this on the future agenda?
Yeah.
When there's, when you wanna provide that?
Yeah, when, when Mr. Ferry's available.
Yeah, that too, or maybe he'll be on another vacation and you can, uh, just.
So, I, I do have a question about this. I've seen, somebody asked a question on, uh, social media. Who, uh, removes the snow in the wintertime on these sidewalks? Who's responsible for that? Is it the town, is it the homeowners that have the sidewalk in their property?
No, we don't, we don't have that bylaw here. As a matter of fact, one of the, one of the property owners, when we initially met with them, uh, the concern was, we don't want sidewalks, cause we're not cleaning them, and Mr. Ferry assured them, this town does not have a bylaw ordinance that would require them to clean them.
So is the town?
We do it, the town.
Okay, because the, on social media, I get it, people on social media may just be complaining, but they were saying that the sidewalks in front of, uh, the school, Bristol Aggie, were not maintained or cleaned last year, the snow wasn't removed from them. I have no idea whether it was or wasn't.
There was barely any snow last year.
I'm just going by what's.
I, I can tell you, I can tell you all the time I lived on Main Street, we had a sidewalk. In all the years that we lived there, the only time it got cleaned is when I went out and decided to shovel it, which was ridiculous, cause I only had a stretch of about a hundred and ten feet that was clear, everything else was snow. So as a practice, uh, the only places I could think of, oh, it's not done by the town. The only place I know for sure that the town in the past has done some clearing is around places of worship. And like they plowed it around, um, Center Street where the brick church is, and, but not parking lots. But just, I'll say widened the roads, pushed the snow bags back. Um, but I think the north end, like where the village is, I think it was the mill that cleared the sidewalks.
Oh, the, I thought we did them, and the Center Street ones are gonna have to be done by us, these new ones, because they're a path to school.
Are we not gonna prepare a bylaw? Every other place I've ever been, you shoveled your own, I mean, is this controversial, did I miss something?
No, no, quite, no, quite.
You shoveled your own sidewalk?
If you don't have a, if you don't have a heated sidewalk, like they do in some of the large cities, um.
Right on it.
You are, you are required to clean them. We don't have that, I'm like.
Well, we need to, can you, we make a note of this, please, cause this is, it defies logic.
Yeah, well, I didn't, yeah, I didn't wanna.
No, no, I understand that wasn't bringing it up.
Yeah, that wasn't, uh, that wasn't my point.
That I'll take the ownership.
But I do know that in the bigger cities, Mrs. Goulart's correct, in the big, bigger cities, my, um, my daughter, several of the owner, property in Brighton, they're responsible for the sidewalk that's in front of their house. And Mrs. Goulart used to do it on Main Street, I understand she may also do Center Street now, shovel Center Street.
Uh, you know.
Further down Tree Mountain Street even?
What I noticed at Mansfield was, they have a special little.
Machine, it's a sidewalk snowplow.
Uh, that, either that or they, it, it blows the snow, but they actually do it in the town, and it's, it's the town that does it. Cause they would be all around there.
But I just feel like we need to get, if we're creating all these sidewalks and we know that this is now a question, and obviously, please no, he did not ask for this, a bylaw or anything, this is just an organic discussion we're having.
I wanna go on social media and make that clear now.
They're, they're typing right now. Um, I feel like we need to get out in front of this, especially when we're constructing all these sidewalks. If this is gonna be an issue we're gonna have to confront, we need to kinda make a decision.
Before we get out in front of it, I, I just want to make you aware, there is going to be a sidewalk within the next, what, three to five years, that goes from William Street to County Street on the north side of Main Street. Now, as you all know, the sections of that road, there are no homes, there are fields and things like that. So if, uh, before we jump into bylaws, we need to take a look at areas where there are sidewalks, where there are no homes or.
Caretakers, yeah.
That's a good point.
That project will be coming down the pipe when the, uh, construction, reconstruction of Main Street takes place. So just something to keep in mind, that's a long sidewalk.
Thank you very much.
And I know that some of the developments, the forty Bs, uh, the developer is responsible till it's, the town approves it. And once the town approves it, then the economy, they have associate, uh, fees, homeowners association has fees, and they maintain those sidewalks. That's a little different, they're, they're responsible for those developments.
But when thinking of a community that has all those, you know, we have op, open spaces, like, with no house near it, I mean, it has a house, obviously, someone owns it, but we should think about those issues. This isn't something that's gonna be done at the special town meeting, no one's, I'm not thinking that, but I do think we need to keep this on our radar as a future thing that might be, could be problematic.
Right, and we need public input on this, obviously, to see what they, uh, how they feel about it.
Uh, okay, well, thank you so much, love talking about sidewalks.
Yeah.
But good work, um, and thank you, Select McGooler, I know you've been pivotal on the, uh, sidewalk projects in town. Next is a, just, we have a discretionary spending request that I assume is over the limit.
Yes, sir, it is.
I obviously know it is. So, um, and it's from the, uh, dis- So, um, and it's from the, uh, Dyton Public Library. This is for, um, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I get excited about this 'cause I use this digital app.
So yes, our, um, library is actually quite active on the digital stratosphere that exists. So, um, if you didn't know that, now you know. And so all of their subscriptions are coming up, 'cause it's like the new year. And, um, so Jocelyn, uh, the library director's put together this requisition form and it's the genealogical database, the digital magazine subscription and the streaming video platform subscription renewal, which I think is Acorn and, um, there's a few others.
BritBox, I believe.
Wait, hold on.
BritBox, too.
We get that free through the library?
I believe so, but you have to like, you might be limited as well, like, I don't think you get the full access if you're your own subscriber, like you're borrowing it. So you're limited to how much you can borrow. But anyway, she, you know, provides, or the town through the library provides us, so this is just renewal of services.
And you have to renew that, the BritBox or Acorn, on a regular basis, not like you just sign up for it and you got it forever, so it's-
Uh, so, and we, just to recap, there are three things, right? There are, there's the streaming video, as you just said, the digital magazine and the full three. Um, do we vote on this as a total, the three thousand two hundred seventy?
Yes, and I think, I, I think it's not Acorn, I'm sorry, I think it's, um, RB Digital Unlimited Video On Demand.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if that's a parent company of Acorn or-
I think, I think it is, and BritBox, so I think that's apparent.
So anyway, that's what that is. I apologize, yes, the full amount.
No worries. So I will entertain motions, um, regarding the, uh, three subscriptions presented from the Dyton Public Library this evening.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the, uh, request from the library, the amount of three thousand two hundred seventy dollars for the streaming video platform subscription, the digital magazine subscription and the full three genealogical database as requested.
I will, uh, second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it and that motion passes. Uh, next on the agenda, bear with me just a moment, I have to flip back, uh, we have public input. So, um, did anyone call, email or Zoom chat?
I have nothing on Zoom, but I think I'm gonna say, um, if anybody on Zoom has public input, they can raise their hand through Zoom or enter their comment in the chat box, or we will unmute you.
Can you just reiterate that this is-
I just wanted to make sure that they could hear us.
Can you reiterate that this is for stuff not on the agenda? This would be like unrelated to agenda.
And this is, uh, for items not included on tonight's gen- agenda. And then, is there anything in?
Okay, okay. Okay. Well, we will get another chance at the end of the meeting.
Oh, hold on. Oh, no, no info, sorry. Sorry, I got excited.
Um, Selectman Pichico, do you mind reading the announcements?
Sure, the first announcement is that the Town of Dyton's annual auction is currently live and ends September fifteenth, twenty twenty. The Town of Dyton's food bank distribution will be held next on September nineteenth, twenty twenty, located in the lower town hall as a drive-through. And we have numerous vacancies on different committees and boards, uh, and they may be one or more members that are needed on these committees. So we need, uh, members for the ADA commission, the bylaw review committee, cable television committee, cemetery commission, community preservation commission, committee, conservation commission, cultural council, development industrial committee, Dyton Trails committee, uh, DR regionalization study committee, DR school, uh, district facilities committee, finance committee, historical commission, industrial and development, finance and authority, uh, land use committee, municipal building study committee, open space committee, superintendent of pest control, taxation aid committee, TIF review board and the ZONI brought up appeals.
Thank you. I do just wanna add something, and then this came to, um, the board of selectmen like right before this meeting. Um, Kristin Kearns, who is the, uh, chairperson of the cultural council here in Dyton, reached out and she's emphasizing the strong need for members, um, because someone did resign and because they're at a bare minimum number of members for a quorum, that they're in risk of losing cultural council grant monies that we get. Um, so we just wanna emphasize, obviously, all of the committees are important, um, but there are bigger things at stake sometimes. So please, if you're interested, I believe that's a com- that a council that doesn't, um, that meets maybe once a month. Um, so I'm not sure the commitment is too much, so please, if you're interested, um, serve your town.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Um, the Lions Club is having a yacht sale at the town hall garage on the nineteenth of this month. I know we voted on that at the department, at the, our posted meeting on the department head. Also, I don't have the date, but also coming up, the Lions are also going to have a takeout chicken barbecue. So that's in the works.
Mm-hmm, and this is like we pick it up, bring it home?
Yeah, I think that it'll be right out here, and I think Tony, I think it's gonna be Tony that does the cooking.
And I believe you can get tickets at Arujos.
Yes.
You know, I don't, I don't know where, where else, but, uh-
Thank you.
Any Lion.
I don't remember the date though, I just, and I saw it today, I don't-
I'm thinking it's the twenty-sixth, but I'm not positive.
We can get that and add it on our current next meeting.
The other thing too is, um, the, um, I think it's the Lions Club in Freetown is having, uh, a big takeout event and it's a combination, oh, you, you gotta pick either pulled pork or chicken. I saw a sign for that at, um, Arujos also. And I know, um, it seems like all the Lions are finally able to do things. I know this coming Sunday, I saw a sign and rehobbit that the Lions are having a takeout chicken barbecue also. I know those tickets are twelve dollars and I know that the Dyton Lions one is fifteen dollars.
Does October twenty-fourth ring a bell?
Tommy had mentioned to me it was gonna be in October.
Can we get the date for the next meeting, please?
October twenty-fourth, uh, one o'clock pickup, so it's a drive-through, so you can't stay there and eat in the pavilion. And it's a drive-through, tickets are fifteen dollars. Money raised goes to, obviously, to the Dines, uh, Dyton Lions Club. It's a chicken barbecue, drive-through only.
Can we get that on the agenda?
Right in the town.
For next time, thank you. Okay. Town administrator report, when you have a moment.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Uh, so I am just here asking to amend the discretionary respent, yeah, requesting, sorry, requesting to, uh, amend our discretionary spending process. Right now, anybody who buys literally anything, no matter the cost, a dollar or above, has to fill out a requisition form. The paperwork is getting rather immense.
I see, that was what I said, I said last time, I'm like, I'll report it, but I feel like this is gonna be a bit of an overwhelming.
So, um, I mean, I can sign them, that's not the problem, but the filing, that we are now putting those with invoices, so filing is growing and growing and growing. So my request is that we set some sort of limit, now I have an arbitrary number of three hundred thousand that these departments can spend by right. They can spend up to two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, I said three hundred thousand, I'm sorry, I'm in three hundred dollars. Uh, so two hundred and ninety-nine dollars without having to get any sort of approval as long as it's in their budget and a, you know, normal expense that they would, uh, have to purchase anyway, to conduct their depart- their business. And then anything from three hundred to fourteen ninety-nine, I would be able to sign off on as, through a requisition form. And then anything over fifteen hundred, and then in the case of the three departments that had a higher threshold, the three thousand would come here still. So I'm not looking to raise your threshold, I'm just trying to weed out some of the ones that are coming to me, because, you know, a thirty-dollar purchase is-
Someone buys paper clips that comes to you?
Thirty dollars.
I had an eleven dollar, no, there was an eleven-dollar headset for Zoom, um, so definitely like a, a normal expenditure, but eleven dollars to fill out a piece of paper is rather laborious. Um, so, I'm requesting that there be sort of a by right threshold.
Well, I think we had, um, to that point, Madam Administrator, I think we had said that we were gonna like see how much paperwork was coming in and then we might need to adjust it. I'm okay with your recommendation, I don't know if anyone else has questions on this.
I do have a question, so thus far, uh, town administrator, I wanna weigh this correctly, I don't wanna insult the department heads or whatever, but has the request been reasonable, have you?
Yes, to, to all, you know, relative to normal course of business, providing services, um, only a cou-
Appropriate and necessary.
Appropriate and necessary, only a couple that have even been near, uh, the threshold, um, literally. I can only think of one off the top of my head, so I say a couple because I'm sure I'm forgetting one. But by and large, most of it has been like a hundred dollars culminating of multiple purchases, so, um, it's just normal expenses that, you know, we would buy on a regular basis. And we're, I should say this, that we are frugal as a bunch, as, as a group, we don't like to spend taxpayer dollars, we don't have to.
Be my concern, so based on that, I, I also would support this, uh, change.
Don't go proving me wrong, department heads.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, modification to the discretionary spending process as presented.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, that motion passes.
Thank you very much, it's not on the agenda tonight, I'm not looking for action, it's just a notice. Um, we unfortunately were not awarded our second shared spaces, shared streets and spaces grant for the DMS sidewalk. Uh, however, at our annual, at our special town meeting, we'll be putting together that engineering request and it will be part, it will be handled as part of that whole driveway for Dyton Middle School and Dyton Elementary. So we didn't get a grant, but it's not off the radar. We also were not, go ahead.
Do you mind if I ask a question about that before we move on? Okay, thank you. Um, so we're gonna, so we already had that project in the works, there's a plan, et cetera, right? Covid happened, so this would be tied into, the sidewalk, excuse me, would be tied into the driveway reconstruction? Okay, all right, that was my question, cool.
Right? Okay. Uh, secondly, we also were not awarded, we were not selected for our MVP action grant, which is rather surprising to me. Um, I did sign up for the feedback meeting, which is in October, um, to find out how we could have improved. Fussen O'Neil was also rather surprised that we weren't selected. Our project was to study the Sagr Ganset River, which is not really studied at all, so this would really be a building block for future stuff, um, for not only us, but other communities, so, and, you know, as a state. So that was unfortunate and we still have one more grant application out there waiting for award and that's, uh, through the DER, so Division of Ecological Resources. Unfortunate news, but you can't win them all.
We don't get any good news tonight?
No, not from me, sorry.
Well, thank you very much and I wanna thank everyone, I know you were very pivotal in those applications, so I just want to thank you regardless of the outcome, everybody involved for, um, never stopping trying. Um, the hustle is, uh, very commendable, to say the least, so thank you.
Will we get another chance to submit?
Yes, and we'll, we'll likely resubmit the same project, unless there's something else that the town wants to explore. But I've asked Arnold to sit in on that call so that he can also, you know, maybe tweak what we presented. Um, it was a rather large, robust project, so maybe they're looking for more targeted tasks. Um, but she did say, Courtney, who you may have met, Selectman Goulart at our CRB, you might have met her too. She was here in the room at our workshop and she said, you know, it was incredibly, as you can imagine, it was incredibly competitive. Um, and I think all of us communities, we knew this was something the governor was going to fund no matter what, so people probably looked at this as a sure thing, that the funds weren't gonna dry up and that they were likely to get, um, funding for their project, so. Um, I'm not losing too much heart, it's still a very worthy project, so we'll, we'll reconsider and resubmit. And then at, you know, when that happens, we'll have an adopted hazard mitigation plan under our belt as well, like a finalized one, so.
Very good, thank you.
Absolutely. Would it be appropriate for me to mention, I saw the grant that we're, we may be doing jointly?
Sure, as long as you're not requesting action on it.
Okay.
I brought it up, I opened the door, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, uh-
MS four?
We were contacted by, uh, the city of Taunton and asked if we were interested in going in on a joint venture with them for, uh, MS four stormwater grant. Um, the other community is the town of Rainham. Uh, so far, the proposal is around fifty thousand dollars. Total funding available is three hundred thousand, so we're not trying to grab everything. Uh, but we're looking at it for potential expansion of education about stormwater for the three communities, um, which would include, um, signs, the kind that you can move around, a couple of them, that we could share in each community at different times, that would carry a message relative to, uh, stormwater. Also included would be medallions that would go on storm drain gr- grates that indicate that everything that goes into that storm drain is eventually gonna end up in a river or the ocean. And then the third thing, the third part of that is potentially some, uh, equipment for the environmental engineering program at the Aggie School. The thought being, Rainham, Taunton and Dyton are tied together because Taunton provides sewer service to Rainham and, and, uh, Dyton. All three communities are connected by the Taunton River and all three communities have students at the Aggie School who could participate and benefit from this equipment. So it's in the, um, working stages and we'll see, uh, how, how it goes. But just to tell you, there's another grant out there on MS four.
Really, it's a good problem in the house.
Well, Bill Muppolitano had contacted me, but there really wasn't time to get something put together and out of the blue, uh, Mr. Hamm called me from Taunton and they had already started working. And they feel having Dyton and Rainham, uh, communities involved, it might give us a better chance.
Getting, getting it?
Yes, cause they like to see communities working together.
I mean, any sort of collaboration, I feel like in hard times, we should probably try to ban it as quick as we can.
Mister Ferry, Mister, Mrs. Aaronstein and I had a conference call with, uh, Mr. Hamm and the gentleman in Taunton who's actually writing the grant, and we discussed a lot of things, so.
Thank you.
It's gotta be in, uh, by the fifteenth of this month for consideration, so.
Yeah, you mentioned, in that letter you also mentioned that they're talking about two bullets and boards, it's too bad, they don't have one for each town.
Well, one of the options, one of the options, we were waiting to find out whether or not the person at DEP felt that it was a good idea to include the Aggie School because we were looking for the way to get to the dollars that we want to ask for. And one of the things that Mrs. Aaronstein and I talked about was if all else fails, go with three signboards, all right? So it's not, it's not set in stone yet, but, yeah.
Yeah, well, thank you for sending us that, uh, letter to let us know beforehand.
Okay.
What was going on, like, obviously, we didn't communicate back, but, uh, I appreciated that.
If, if the grant gets funded, then we and Rainham will have some kind of a, each community will have an agreement with Taunton on the whole thing, as that draft said.
Okay. We are gonna move on to old business, thank you. Um, it is seven thirty, um, we are not gonna keep Andrew here past eight thirty, so we're gonna get through the rest of this in an hour. Old business, discuss fines to be levied in dog mauling incident of August seventeenth, twenty twenty. Um, Madam Administrator, we have run some numbers, but I don't know if you wanted to sort of kick us off here.
Sure, let me-
Maybe recap what had happened at the separate, or where we ended up after the disciplinary, uh, dangerousness, excuse me, hearing.
So, uh, on Monday, August twenty-fourth, we held a dangerousness hearing and concluded that chapter of our lives, uh, for a minute. Uh, the only kind of leftover item was to discuss the fines that would be levied against the owner of the dog um, due to the lack of licensing and vaccinating of two animals. So at the hearing, there was talk about going all the way back, um, and then I had requested that, that us, that we would reach out to council and kind of confer with what would be appropriate and get some guidance. And the motion, uh, made by, I believe, Selectman Goulart, mentioned reasonable fines. So, um, it's a hundred dollars and fifty dollars a day for not licensing and not vaccinating respectfully. So combined, it's a hundred and fifty dollars a day. I reached out to, um, town council Matt Casa and let him know what we were thinking about, um, and that we were talking about two dogs. And I, he wrote back basically, you, apply whatever you would do to anybody, that this would basically be precedent setting and so whatever you thought would be reasonable going forward, um, for anybody to kind of live up to. So probably going way back eight years or however long is a little bit out of the question. Uh, he also, um, said it's up to us about Roxy because, uh, she was put down. Um, and I do have confirmation about that, I did get that from the vet's office. So, I'm thinking just go from the date of incident for each dog, considering that the infraction was over ten years of not doing this every year. Um, so that the date of incident was August seventeenth and if you did it- Um, so that the date of incident was August seventeenth, and if you did it to present, which my email is outdated now, but um, if you did it to eight twenty-eight for Roxy, which was the date of euthanizing her, that's twelve days. Times a hundred and fifty is eighteen hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm.
I have an affidavit that says what, that, that, so, I'm sorry, Dozer, the other animal, uh, was adopted out, have a signed affidavit dated August twenty-sixth of the person that took the dog, recognizing that, um, there's a history with this animal, that it could have been considered dangerous had a dangerousness hearing been held at the time. Um, and that is dated August twenty-sixth, so I did the math out to August twenty-sixth, thinking that's when he took the dog. Um, and that the attorney Cohen had verified that the dog was no longer living, um, in the home. And so that's ten days from the date of incident, August seventeenth, to the twenty-sixth. That's fifteen hundred dollars for a total of thirty-three hundred dollars if you decided to impose fines on Roxy.
The numbers that we were discussing at the dangerousness hearing were going back to January first. And I know we didn't like vote on those specific numbers, because in the motion, there was a mention of that they should be, um, or we wanted them to be reasonable fees, because we are aware that this is precedent setting. Um, so I guess I wanted to, um, open it up to my colleagues, if, if, if that's okay.
Yes.
Actually, let me back up. Is, are these numbers, the three thousand, three hundred dollars total for the owner? That would, they, they would have to pay that to the town of Dyton?
This is, yes, this is for the licensing and the vaccine. We've already sent the lease law. It's already been done.
Correct. The lease law, yeah, that was fifty dollars. Um, is that your recommendation in consultation with Town Council?
Um, it is, and I know it's rather harsh, because, uh, he did have to lose.
I don't think it is. I think it's lenient, but, but it's, we can't, I just don't think we can go back to January first and give someone.
No, no.
Mind you, one dog would be thirty-seven or thirty-six thousand, multiplied by two.
And we wouldn't do that. Thousand dollars, yeah.
We're gonna expect someone to pay seventy-eight thousand dollars. I mean, I just don't think that.
I don't think that.
I didn't mean to cut you. I just think that's a reason.
It's okay.
And then go back ten years and.
Correct. Well, multiply by ten, correct.
Seven hundred and eighty, seven hundred and eighty thousand. So, uh, I'm in fa-.
Beautiful floor.
Yeah, I'm in favor of going, uh, starting, uh, August seventeenth, because that's the date that the town became aware. We could go further if we wanted to bring witnesses in to say that the dog was there in January, March, or whatever. I think thirty-three hundred dollars is already pretty steep. Uh, it's sending the message clearly to the, uh, to the town that you need to license your dog, you need to get the vaccinations. So I'm in favor of going back to, uh, August seventeenth, and these fees are appropriate, I think.
So August seventeenth for Roxy, and then?
Yeah, they're both August seventeenth. It's the August twenty-sixth and August twenty-eighth for each, uh, different dogs.
And then also for Dozer. Okay. Ten and twelve days.
Yeah.
Um, I, and like I said, um, I, I'm okay with that. Um, because I acknowledge that we have, we will hold everyone to the same standard. What I also want to throw out there is, we shouldn't, it shouldn't, we as a town, it should not take us ten years in a mauling to determine that someone wasn't licensing their dogs. Like, we know these people, we know, they live in our community, we're friends with them, we know people that know them. Why is it taking us ten years to figure this out, and someone, someone's dog is not with us anymore? We need to be proactive. We need to have these conversations. I know this is uncomfortable, okay? It's uncomfortable for me too. But we need to be proactive, and on top of these things, no more dog incidents. We need to get out in front of these incidents. So we're not here again discussing this at a future meeting. Slaugan Goolard?
Uh, yeah, I, I consider these reasonable. Um, and, and as I said when I made the motion, I also think that, uh, after we act on this tonight, and I'm certainly willing to make a motion to support these numbers, um, I think we need to, um, also vote tonight to notify one more time. Everyone that the town clerk knows has an unlicensed dog, that the fine is, what, as we said, one's, uh, fifty dollars a day, and one's a hundred dollars a day. Give them X days to get those animals licensed, which means they've gotta have them vaccinated. And anyone who doesn't respond, then the town takes action.
By a certain date, right?
Exactly.
Okay, so we're gonna start the, the clock on the fines.
Yeah, so they'll, they'll have amnesty to a certain date, and after that.
So, Slaugan Pacheco? Correct.
That's right.
They could be penalized.
And we're not gonna go back ten years. I know there are people that, you know.
No, 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 we're gonna start now.
Yeah.
Right, and the.
And go forward, and each year, when she sends out the, wins out the letter, you know, you haven't licensed your dog, that letter is gonna state, you have X days to get this taken care of, or fines will be applied. Uh, it's, it's the only way to do it fairly.
And may I go a step further? So what's gonna happen? So she's gonna have some sort of a list of people who didn't send in their stuff back. What are we gonna do with the people? Are we, what are we doing with that list? We, we can't just let this.
So.
And I know we don't have it all figured out. I get that.
The fees accumulate, and then.
But at what, so if they never pay, what do we, just never do anything?
No, no, no.
It just keeps going in an imaginary number on a spreadsheet somewhere?
I think we need to take action. We're gonna be reminded that the list that, uh, our clerk has are those stocks that have already been licensed, and they haven't been renewed.
There are people, yeah.
Right. So there are occasions, and I got a letter, I had to put my dog down, I got a letter saying we didn't get the license for the dog after we put the dog down, so there are gonna be those situations where the dog is no longer living in, in town. Uh, so we have to take that into consideration, but I do, uh, this has to get out, we, we're giving somebody a fine of thirty-three hundred dollars, and we're serious about this. I think it's only fair to the residents that we give them an opportunity to correct, uh, what's happened. The vaccinations aren't gonna, you know, we can't give them just a week, because they're gonna get the, the animal, the dog vaccinated and it made it happen right away. Uh, thirty days or whatever, I'm not sure what Mrs. Goolard's thinking of, but something reasonable. But then after that, we have a list, and it may be something that the dog, uh, our animal control officer needs to go to these houses, verify the dog is there, and they come before us, I guess, and, and we'll impose the.
And I know we don't have it all worked, but I get your point that, that needs to be addressed before an incident happens.
Yeah, I think under the law, if you, so let's say the letters go out, and say you get X days to take care of this. If failing to hear from you, uh, fines will begin on this date, whatever the date is. And if there's no response, then under law, I'm sure we can take legal action to send them a bill
Mm-hmm.
and remind them that this thing is cumulative, and take the, take legal action to get the animal licensed.
And each day is a new offense or whatever.
And I would think if you don't have the animal anymore, or you would immediately respond and say, I don't have the dog anymore, that, you know.
Take me off the list.
Yes, exactly.
And that should be part of the letter, though, that, you know, if you no longer have this dog, or the dog is passed, or whatever, I mean.
Please, please let us, email us, let us know.
I don't wanna embarrass you, I think your dog was recently passed, so that's, that's.
Yeah. We'll be on the, the list.
Yeah, so that's kind of the situation. I, we had to put our dog down. I didn't go run into the town and say, oh, by the way, this dog.
Yeah, of course, of course.
So once we get the letter, though, what did I do? I came to town and corrected it, so.
Yep.
I think the letter has to, uh, be worded correctly, and, uh, they're gonna be those situations.
And maybe, you know, and maybe we could have, you know, the town administrator, they can powwow together on what that. Um, I'm not giving you, um, another thing to do. I apologize, but I just, we wanna make sure that.
Yeah, no, it's, it's.
We wanna make sure that it's correct and legally binding and all those.
And, and we can have, uh, we can have Town Council take a look at the draft notification to make sure we've, uh, done what's appropriate under the law.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
I, I agree with everything that was said, and I appreciate.
So, Mister Chairman, I will make a motion
Mm-hmm.
that we levy the fines of, for non-vaccination and non-renewal of license on Roxy at eighteen hundred dollars, and Dozer at fifteen hundred dollars, for a total of three thousand, three hundred dollars to Mister Duddy.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any, um, and under discussion, I just wanted to say, um, I just want to be very clear. Um, this is how we will judge every circumstance that comes to us going forward. So it will be fair, it will be equitable, and everyone will be treated, uh, fairly in this regard. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, um, and that motion passes. Before we move on, were there any other, I just wanted to ask, I guess, is there any public input or anything on this?
Uh, not on this. On the next item, uh, Mrs. Duchesky would like to speak.
Oh, and did you have anything else?
I wanna make another motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sure. That, that was the other thing I was.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I move that the board working with the town administrator, the town clerk, and the animal control officer establish a written notification to be sent to the owners of unlicensed, unvaccinated dogs listing the fines to be applied, and that a reasonable time period for compliance be included in that notification.
I will second that motion.
We have a, uh, motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? I will just ask, um, could we just get a call, like, the final version?
Sure.
Just to see, so we know if we get a call or an email about it, like, hey, what's this?
And also, um, this is just gonna be a list of the dogs that we know of, so for the public out there, if you have a dog that needs to be licensed, uh, please visit the town clerk's office.
Like, that's never been licensed before, now would be.
Right, right, with the valid copy of the rabies vaccine.
Correct.
Um, current and valid.
And the public should know that if you're seventy years or older, you don't have to pay the license fee to the town.
I didn't know that.
Yes.
Or if your dog is six months or under, I believe.
Well, you can't get the rabies vaccine, or the dog can't get the rabies vaccine six months or under, so.
Yes. But they still have to be licensed? I don't think they have to be licensed.
No, no, you can't be licensed until you have the rabies, so once they get the rabies.
Talk about a circle there.
Well, once you get the rabies vaccine, they get notice.
The exemption for the age of the owner does not exempt vaccination. The animal still has to be vaccinated.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay?
Understood.
And, and along those lines that you said, when we have that notification, we should probably read it at the selectance meeting.
Sure.
So that everyone understands, this is what's coming.
Schedule announcements?
Yeah, we might do it a couple of times, and maybe post it also on appropriate sites.
Yes.
My to-do box item is getting horrible. Sorry.
No, I can help with, I can help with that, and we'll send it out via.
Well, I wrote, Gil, I'm gonna contact John Guilfoyle and have us take care of that.
It's a good idea.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. So, um, is it okay to move, did we, all the things are tied up, all the loose ends?
Yeah, took care of that. Yes.
Uh, next is to discuss establishing a human rights committee. Um, we did, uh, have our friends in Easton here, um, who gave us some ideas. Um, without me showing too much leg, I think nine people is probably too much for Dyton. Um, but what are our thoughts on this?
Uh, seven.
Five or seven for me?
Seven.
Seven, because, because when it was, I, I believe you might have mentioned something on, uh, social media, and there seemed to be a lot of interest. There was at least five or six names of people who were interested, and I made a comment that I'm taking names, so, uh, if these people are really interested in, in this. Uh, so I think there is a, a need for, I think seven is reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
Whether we want to, uh, have a school committee member, that's something we can discuss. Uh, and also whether or not we want, uh, a representative from the police department.
So my thought on that is, so I'm not, I mean, it would be nice to have continuity with the school committee. My only thing is, they are very busy right now. Just, it's just the budget, and there's just a lot of things that have just converged for them. It's like a perfect storm. Um, I'm not sure they would have the time. Their meetings are like twice as long as ours are, and sometimes they're doing it twice a week.
Their meetings are ten hours?
No, 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 like.
You said twice as long.
No, they're like four hours, but I guess, I definitely would love to see if, um, the SRO, our student resource officer, would be interested. I certainly will not. I don't want to, uh, say like, you're gonna do this. I don't think we can, and I don't wanna do that anyway. But I would love to see if they would be interested in that. Maybe that could be our police slash school, um, resource, unintended.
My thought on that is the town of Easton has its local schools under its own control.
Mm-hmm.
We're part of a regional school district. Therefore, if the other member town, um, doesn't have or doesn't care to, or, they don't have that committee right now.
Mm-hmm.
So if we have it in Dyton, and we have a school committee person, well, how would you do something at the regional high school? Uh, because we have a, a member town who also has students there. Uh, I think, I think initially for the seventh, we can always, if we have to, either add or have a liaison. But I think, as Mister Pacheco said, maybe for right now, we don't have somebody from, specifically from the, uh, school committee.
Sure.
And, and we would involve the police as necessary.
Mm-hmm.
Not because that, there's somebody on the committee from the police department.
Okay.
But somebody who would be involved if.
Like a liaison, I get it.
If a situation required involvement, let me put it that way.
I, so, may I make a co- a comment that's almost not related to that, and I apologize? So I agree with everything you said, not disagreeing, but I do think.
Wait a minute, Ken and I are gonna vote on that.
I do think that we should probably have someone from the Board of Selectmen be on it, and they can be like non-voting. And I'm not gonna volunteer myself, because I just like cannot. I just do not have the time.
I've expressed an interest in it, so I would, you know, I'm not sure what Mrs. Goolard's position is on this.
No, no, I, I think it's, I think it's fine. I think it's fine, you know.
Not as a voting member, but as the liaison person.
And just let us know, like, if, if something really is happening, and they've, this committee has reached out to, and there's, they're talking to someone at the police department, like a liaison. I think I would like to also just at least be aware in case we get questions about it. So that's what I mean, just for continuity.
Okay, so, Mister Chairman, I will make a motion that we establish a human rights committee with seven members. And that they.
Voting, 'cause he's not voting.
No, with seven members, and that a representative from the Board of Selectmen be a non, an additional member, non-voting.
Got you. I will, um, okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, uh, I will, uh, uh, second that motion.
I don't know why. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Um, and, uh, if, if you, if you want to be the, uh, non-voting, I think we call it like an associate member. Um, we can put that on the agenda for, um, next week.
Sure.
Uh, next meeting, excuse me.
Two weeks.
Mm-hmm. Anything else under discussion?
So we'll put the word out and ask people to submit, uh, an application of interest?
Uh, one last question. Kim, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I would suggest then, uh, we form the committee.
Mm-hmm.
They come up with a mission statement.
That was my question.
And they bring it back to the, the board, and if we're in agreement with the mission statement.
Okay.
Because I think it's important that we get involved in the mission statement, but let the committee members see what they're looking for, and hopefully it's, it's in agreement, we're, uh, we're, we're looking for, so.
And then one last question before we actually vote on this. Um, and I'm a yes vote, so I'm not stalling it. Um, are we going to follow suit with what Easton did where they, like, the Board of Selectmen interviewed the people? I actually, like, how is that gonna work? Like, how, are we gonna pick the people? Usually, the committee is already functional, and they're like, they will meet and give us a recommendation.
To serve on the committee? Right, it's the same thing that we did for the governance committee. You had, um.
Which didn't end too well, so.
Well, but we actually.
But you interviewed people.
We never actually got a committee appointed, because enough people withdrew. We didn't have enough for a committee.
We fell apart.
But the Board of Selectmen appoints committees, so it's gonna have to come to the Board of Selectmen. And if we have a, a lot, that's why we're gonna have to go through applications.
Do you wanna do interviews like we did last? Like, where we had the time, like five minutes?
I don't know if we need.
Well, well, let's just vote on creating it, and then if you get the, um, maybe you only get seven, I doubt it, but maybe you only get seven people, then your slots are filled and it's all set. And just to let you know, uh, Mrs. Duchkowsky does have some public input on this item, so after you vote.
Well, well, let's go now.
Okay.
I'll just remember.
Jen, can you hear us? We're ready for your comment. Yep, there we go.
I can hear you, yes, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. No worries. Could you hear us at all?
Nope.
Can, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's a little echoey. I could hear you better the first time and the third time, but the middle time, there's a reason it sounded distant.
Did I move closer? I must have. Okay, sorry. Please go ahead. You have the floor. Need a new laptop.
Okay, I apologize. Um, I just wanted to extend my gratitude to the board for looking into this. I think it's really important for our town. I think that it can really, um, become, uh, a hallmark of our community, and I think that, um, there's some really exciting opportunities that could come from forming this. Um, and I think, you know, for the youth of our town, um, there's opportunities to get involved that maybe, um, elsewise haven't existed. So I might, um, ask that the board thinks about having, um, youth members as a part of this board. Um, I think it would be a great way to have, um, some connection to our local government.
I like that. Or even, um, and you may have to translate for me, if not, like, having youth members. If not, like, having youth members, 'cause again, I don't know who's gonna apply, maybe having like a youth, like a subcommittee that's just youth.
So you.
Or something.
My thought on that, 'cause I think to be an appointed committee member, you have to be a registered voter, I think.
You could be right about that.
I believe so.
So they, if they're under eighteen, they can't do that. So if you had, kind of how the Lions has, have the Leos.
Sure.
If the school okayed this, but had kind of a, um, like a mini group that would help partner with the Human Rights Committee, I think that'd be great. And then, you know, kids band together with, uh, similar interests, so it would be nice to have.
Like a partner?
Yeah.
Like, like.
Just like how the Dayton Lions have the Leos, exactly.
Or, or just having an advisory, um, a youth advisory to the committee.
Oh, yeah.
And, and having some, some sort of, you know, sort of like on the school committee, how they have, uh, youth members from the school participating every year. Um, it would be a great way to have, uh, students, you know, get involved around something that they're passionate about.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We do have, um, a new joiner to our room, so I'm just gonna let her get all set in. Do you have any, um, Mrs., oh, she's, she's coming, hold on.
Probably.
Mrs. Quinn, we're just talking about the Human Rights Committee, um, and before they vote, I wanted to make sure, I don't know if you were watching live somehow, or how you were doing that. But if you came on just for that, I wanna do, mention it, in case you have any input on this topic, before we move on. I feel like she's good, 'cause she's not.
Yeah, she would unmute.
I would hope that if we get quite a few applications, we're gonna end up with a diverse committee.
That's what I want.
Yes, that's what we're looking for.
Correct.
That's really what we're looking for.
I appreciate that. I feel the same way. Uh, any further discussion? Any email or call? No? Carry a pigeon? Nope?
I have none.
Hearing none? Correct, anything, we'll take anything. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Good work.
Okay.
Um, next we have, um, on the agenda to open the warrant for the special town meeting and to set a closing date of October fifth, twenty twenty. So, um, did you wanna present anything?
Don't send me your warrant articles. No, I'm just kidding. Uh, this is just to, um, formally open the warrant. If anybody has any, um, items, I have amassed quite a few. So I've already gotten started on our special town meeting warrant. Um, we have some budgetary changes that we have to fix, a couple of, uh, oversights, because we, for those who don't know, we, we kind of morphed into a digital platform with a Google document of the budget. And a couple of expenses in, um, the departmental budgets didn't carry over to the master. So we're just, yeah, we're just fixing a few issues, um, and then some other lines that need to be looked at. Um, so, there's other stuff too. Of course there is, but it's officially open once you vote. So, once you vote, uh, it'll be open.
And so the, the opening is?
Tonight.
Okay.
And then, uh, I'm requesting that you just take your vote to close it on October fifth, and we'll keep our schedule.
Did there a certain time, end of day?
Um, what would you like? End of day?
Are you sure? Not twelve PM? Okay, all right.
Karen is much too, like, lenient and helpful.
See, not me. I'm like, shut the door. You didn't get it in?
Top-notch customer service right there.
So, we don't know how much free cash we have yet?
It's around, oh, I'm on camera. It's, I'm gonna estimate one and a half million, but I think it's one point seven, so we'll see if I'm right.
Why did I hear one point one? Did I, I must have made that, I do this all the time, I'm sorry.
No, you have fantastic revenues, so, yeah, yeah. So, um, we also really clamped down. I mean, for the spring, we didn't spend much money because of COVID. We've shut everything down, so, um, yep, I, I think it'll be. I'm going with one and a half, but.
Okay.
I'm optimistic, so I think it's one point seven, so we'll see. Dollar bet.
So I will entertain, uh, motions regarding the opening of the warrant and the closing on October fifth, twenty twenty.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we open the warrant, uh, for the special town meeting. Uh, you want tonight or tomorrow?
Uh, to, well, tonight is fine.
Uh, on September the ninth, and that we close it on October the fifth at noon?
Four.
Four, which one?
Four.
At four PM on October the fifth, twenty twenty.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just thank you, Karen, for.
I just wanted to briefly say, I think the, uh, board ought to seriously consider putting some of the free cash into stabilization or, uh, capital. So that we, in the future, we have some money available for library, new, uh, fire station, moving the highway department, so that we.
No, I totally, Silicon Pacheco, I totally support that. I think typically we were doing, and again, it varies. We're doing something like two hundred thousand every year at the special, and then putting also some money away for OPEB, like our unfunded liabilities either. So it's like this balancing act, um, that we're doing.
Because we usually give, uh, Mary a s- a relatively smaller amount at the annual for OPEB. But, uh, I think with what we're looking at this year, potentially, uh, and the fact that the word is out, don't come in with long lists. Because if we, if we look at whatever the number is, and our priorities are stabilization, capital stabilization, and OPEB. So that's ka-ching, ka-ching, ka-ching. The next thing has gotta be free cash, because we don't know where we're going to be in the next FY twenty-two.
Yeah.
Right? So, obviously, we wanna have a cushion there in case something happens, and, and if nothing happens, we've got that money going into FY twenty-two. Which is another further ka-ching. So that by prioritizing those four items, it's not gonna be, come in with your list, 'cause we got money.
Well, there's also the police station bond that we've been paying out of our free cash.
Exactly, yeah.
And, uh, I would like to keep some available, not in stabilization, because to get it out, you need two-thirds vote.
That's why it's in free cash. That's what I mean.
Exactly, yes. So we, we share the same, just in case.
So that's now, so that's now five items, fi- let's call them five items off the top, the last one being the, the, the mortgage payment for the police station.
For the bond.
And we used to, I don't wanna add another one, but we used to, in those years where the free cash was like two million dollars, which doesn't sound like it will be that this year. We also used to put money back to lower the tax rate.
Right.
So I'm not sure that we're gonna have to come here this year about.
So, well, we also have talked about the one hundred and five thousand, we talked about last meeting for the library. I have a request in there for eighty-five thousand for the driveway engineering stuff, so.
So, I, I think, uh, you know, with, with.
There's a lot.
But we know this, and we know this, and we, we can plan for that.
And they're active projects. They're not just coming up. They're active.
We're getting it out there too.
Correct.
We're telling everybody right now, these are the things we have to look at. Um, so in addition to, uh, the five we mentioned, there are certain things that have to be done. That study and whatever else is coming along, town-type things as opposed to one department, okay?
So we have a, um, motion in a second to open the warrant this evening and close it on October fifth, twenty twenty, end of day, four thirty PM. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. We have a request, um, from the Dayton Historical Society, uh, to waive fees, um, for an event that they're having. So bear with me just a moment. Uh, we got a letter dated, uh, Au- August twenty-fourth, twenty, I say event, it's literally a meeting. August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, "Good morning, on behalf of the Dayton Historical Society, uh, I'd like to request the use of the Old Town Hall Meeting Room for the six dates listed on the attached sheet. In order to hold our meetings in the here spacing requirements during the pandemic, there will not be more than ten to twelve members at these meetings, which is, is in line with this, uh, what's allowed in this room we're in." Um, "We're also requesting a waiver of fees, because we're a nonprofit organization and would appreciate your help with this expense. Sincerely, Chris Pacheco." Um, and so the dates are, bear with me a second, September twenty-first, twenty twenty, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, November thirtieth, twenty twenty, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, and March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Um, I support this. I would just ask if we could somehow get those dates to the town clerk for this room, just, um, at five-thirty, from five-thirty to seven, so that something else isn't booked. 'Cause you know how we, like, when I post a meeting, I go right over there and I reserve the room.
So I believe, um, Mrs. Brady and Mrs. Kirwin in our office have a whole system, and then it notifies Mr. Aguirre, and it's very digital and.
And even though there was a, do I not need to do what I've been doing then?
I don't think so.
Could someone please fill me in?
You have a, a well-oiled machine, Mr. Ray.
Yeah, I was unaware of that.
We actually, we actually verify the whole batch once a week, so, yeah, we, we got this.
Perfect. I invented some other system. I will stop doing that.
Um, so if I could just make a comment, uh, just for clarification, uh, Chris Pacheco is my wife. She's the president of the Dayton Historical Society. And I'm also an officer of the Dayton Historical Society. It's a nonprofit, and, uh, I won't be voting on this, because there, there may be a conflict, there is a conflict, so.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a mo- I move that we approve use of the hall.
Mm-hmm.
On the dates requested from the Dayton Historical Society.
I'm gonna step down and second that motion. Discussion?
Oh, excuse me, and that we waive.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, and that we, we waive the, uh.
The fees?
The fees, uh, because this is a nonprofit organization.
I'm still gonna second, and step down a second. Uh, anything under discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, for the record. All right, that passes. And thank you, Dayton Historical, uh, Society. Next on our agenda is to appoint Kay Naliki to the Bylaw Review Committee. And so they did, bear with me a moment, there was just, we got some sort of clarity as if I had raised a question, if this was what they wanted to do, if they wanted to help with voting. They clearly want to be on the Bylaw Review Committee, so who are we to stop them? So I will entertain motions.
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
We also have a quorum at the end of this vote.
Almost, or will?
We will.
If, okay, everybody show up. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Uh, next on the agenda, we have, uh, to appoint Kevin Smith Jr. to the ADA Commission. We've got things like full, full already.
No, it isn't, no.
No, 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 there's, uh.
We have three members.
You have three, this would be four. What is it, a seven-member?
Seven.
Oh, you still have three.
I think it's actually five, because we have a, uh, maj- majority now. We have a quorum now, this, this is even better.
So after him, you'll have one vacancy.
Okay, that's awesome. That's really great.
Good, just in time.
Yeah.
They have some stuff to do.
Here's the work. It's all fun and games until the work comes.
So the, uh, commissions, just for the record, the commission's meeting, I believe it's next week. We have a.
I didn't know that.
We've got, maybe you didn't get a copy of the email, but I believe it's gonna be the, uh, the seventeenth, which is the Thursday at three o'clock. I think all the members so far have, uh, are wa- aware of that, and they can do that. There will also be a, a Zoom meeting for one of the members, I believe. Uh, so, if we approve, uh, Mr. Smith, which I would recommend that we do that, we need to sign the, uh, as soon as possible, so he can get sworn in.
Yeah, I'll come by tomorrow and sign it, yeah.
Yeah, just so.
You have it with you.
Oh, okay, because.
Oh, we'll sign it. Don't even let us leave.
So efficient.
Yes, I'm not available the rest of the week, so if I can sign it, just remind me to, to sign it.
Perfect.
So I'm gonna make a motion, uh, that Kevin Smith, uh, Junior, uh, be appointed to the ADA Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just that his resume, uh, looks great. I think he's gonna be a great, uh, person on this, uh, committee, so.
He's got a lot of, like, spirit and energy. I just feel like he's gonna be a really good asset to any, any commission that he would wanna be on.
This is gonna be like, um, Mr. Chandonay, where he started and won, and then he just sort of grew to other positions, so, Mr. Smith.
Well, somebody told him that the cemetery, uh, committee only meets once or twice a year, I believe.
It's pretty dead.
And he believed it.
And he believed it, and, uh, it met more often than that.
But that trick only works once.
I know, I just outed it for Mr. Smith. He doesn't know.
As Mr. Berry said, we only met once or twice a year, 'cause I didn't have really a committee, but once I got a committee, we're gonna start.
Now we have work.
Yes.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Um, for a discussion of, uh, appointments to Stormwater Committee, I know, um, the Planning Board had chosen to, um, wanted to recommend it to appoint, right?
So, um, Mr. Piers was no longer on the Planning Board, so the Planning Board chose, um, Mr. Reins. And then, I'm actually confused, 'cause I think there's one seat, but two people interested. I don't know. I, is it Mr. Pilling?
We, we appointed.
You have the, just, you can explain it, too, 'cause we're obviously.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause we don't know.
Okay, so, um, what you said is correct. Uh, Tom Piers went from being the Planning Board rep to the Board of Health rep. The Planning Board appointed Mr. Reins, their rep, to the Stormwater Committee. The Stormwater Committee was originally formed with seven members. When one member left and moved out of town, we didn't replace her. And so with, and when, before Mr. Piers, uh, left Planning Board, and Mr. Reins was appointed. Uh, Mr. Pilling, who is the health agent, served as the Board of Health representative. So when we appointed Mr. Reins, we talked about bringing the committee back to a full seven-member voting committee. Mr. Pilling said he is willing to serve, even if he's not a voting member. But since we have a vacancy for a voting member, I would like to, uh, see that Mr. Pilling be appointed to the committee. As the health agent, simply because hi- his expertise in so many areas are important. Uh, whether it's a site visit, whether he goes out with the building commissioner, this highway superintendent, or we all do a visit at a solar farm. Uh, he is really into the technical part and the soil and all that other stuff. So, um, I would like to see Mr. Pilling, uh, assigned, he's already, it's like he got bumped, but, uh, make it official. He is a voting member of the Stormwater Committee, and the committee will be back to the original seven slots that were set up. That's what I'm looking for.
So I, I'm in favor of this, but are we able to vote on this tonight? Because it says, discuss appointments, it doesn't say to appoint?
But when I did that, so there were several people that were in question, so that's why I wanted to be not, not put like the specific names on there.
I would say yes, because last meeting, you were very clear, 'cause it came up. I think we, you, you had added to the motion, and we were like, that one's not on the agenda.
We had, we had three people, Mr. Piers, Mr. Reins, and Mr. Pilling. And we were able to, Mr. Piers just slid over. Mr. Reins got appointed. We could not act on Mr. Pilling, because that appointment was not on the agenda. But I had asked about it, and we said, we'll talk about it and do it at the next meeting, so that's why it's here again.
But Mr. Piers still needs a vote, because now he's representing a, a different board. Do I have that right? He's now the Board of Health?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have to vote, that, that's why I put that, so we have to vote on him, and then also.
Because, yes. Because in his role as Board of Health, he's now representing the Board of Health, and then.
Right, so, so, um, I would make a motion that we, uh, recognize and appoint Tom Piers as the Board of Health representative to the Stormwater Committee.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I, I'm gonna give my preference. I would prefer to have Mr. Pilling be the Board of Health representative, because he's the health agent. And then Mr. Piers can be this, filling this seventh slot.
Well, what's this, is the seventh slot representative?
Mr. Piers is a member of the Board of Health. He is one of the three.
I'm just thinking, like, if he's not, if, like, the membership changes. The other thing is, he would, um, so he was Planning Board originally? That's how he was on there?
Yes, yes.
I just would prefer it either be the chair or, um, the health agent.
Okay, they would all have the same voting power. Mr. Pilling, Mr. Piers, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Is this seventh position that somebody vacated and was never filled?
Yes.
It, was that an out-large member, or is that representative of a certain function?
No, no. She was, she was on the board, and I believe she was the Planning Board rep at the time. And when she left, Mr., because Mr. Piers was on the Planning Board, he just assumed the position. So that left a vacancy that we never filled.
'Cause what was, so he had a spot as what? At. 'Cause what was, so he had a spot as what, at-large, and then he became the planning board rep? So there was a vacant spot that Tom Piers moved from?
We've been a six-member committee now for quite a while, well over a year.
I also believe that Mr. Pilling should serve. I think he has a very succinct set of skills that assists this town. He's an asset, in short. So I would not like to see him leave the committee. I don't, I don't really know if that was like an at-large member, should that be a member of the public?
No, it wasn't an at-large member, and the thing was, fortunately with a six-member committee, most of the time, if not all the time, the votes were unanimous. We didn't have a problem.
You don't have a tiebreaker though.
But, that's right. Yeah, usually when the committee decides to take action, it's unanimous. The, um, we didn't go out to fill that, that particular slot, because we had the makeup on the committee to continue to do the work, okay? This only occurred because Mr. Piers is no longer on the planning board, so therefore he can't represent them. But he is on the Board of Health, and at the time he was chairman of the Board of Health. They've reorganized, but he's still the member from the Board of Health. And so Mr. Pilling has served on the committee as a voting member.
As the Board of Health rep?
As the Board of Health rep, as, yes. So what we're looking is, since we have a vacancy on a seven-member committee and we wanna keep Mr. Pilling, he can move over to health agent. 'Cause actually he's, Mr. Pilling was representing the Board of Health, because he was the health agent. He's also the stormwater agent. So he's, he's still got a dual role.
Karen, do you still have that, not to put you on the spot, we found like a piece of paper a long time ago. Is that with us? It was, it talked about the starting of the Stormwater Committee. Do we have that? 'Cause it listed this. And so I'm, to me, it's like musical chairs in my head to try to figure out which seat, because there's been some shifting.
But it, but what was just said was that Mr. Pilling was the Board of Health representative, so why are we changing anything? Isn't he already on it?
Yes.
He is, but since
So why do we need to vote him back in?
Well, that's what I'm saying, Mr. Piers shouldn't be the Board of Health. He should just fill the at-large one that he had originally.
When I, I said under discussion just now that I would prefer Mr. Pilling be the Board of Health rep.
Well, actually
And Mr. Piers can be the seventh voting spot.
That, filling the seat he vacated the first time, yeah.
What I would need to know is, did the Board of Health vote when they reorganized to put Mr. Piers on as their rep?
No, no, I mean, we didn't get, we didn't get any notification of that.
I never got anything.
I got a meeting next week. I want Mr. Pilling to be on that committee and voting as a seventh member, whatever he's called.
But he is on the committee now though, right? As a voting member?
Yes.
So what is, how does he get off? Why, why do we need to put him back on?
No, no, when Mr. Piers said he wanted, he would come back, he would become the rep from the Board of Health, 'cause he's not on the planning board. So we still have, that would have been six members. The planning board chose a representative, okay? So that became Mr. Reins, okay? Mr. Pilling said, I'm willing to stay, but I don't have to vote. I'm just looking to make it official that Mr. Pilling is still on the committee and he is a voting member.
Yeah, nothing's ever changed in my mind. That's why I was confused, and I apologize, but that's why, I always thought he was on it. I understood Mr. Piers because of the planning board and that, to me, made sense.
So, I've, it's a seven-member committee, right? There are six members on it now, including Todd. Am I correct?
No, there's actually seven with Todd.
Who's the seventh?
Board of Selectmen rep, Planning Board rep, Conservation Commission, Building Commissioner, Highway Superintendent, Board of Health, and then we have the, and then we have the health agent.
So the health agent serves in the role as the health agent?
Which would be Todd.
Which would be Todd.
So we can
So, okay.
So then there isn't a Board of Health. I feel like we just solved it, far out. We just figured it out.
But Mr. Piers is not on the committee now, because he was the representative for the planning board, so I think we need to appoint him.
Yeah, where did the Board of Health person go?
Aren't all three health board, Board of Health members also health agents? No?
No.
It's, it's you. You're the one that I'm thinking of. Okay. Okay. Well, we need a letter from the Board of Health, I guess, saying who it's gonna be and if it's gonna be
Yeah, I'm not just, I mean, I'm sure they'll pick Mr. Piers, I feel, obviously, but, I mean, we are, we, we always wait till we get that. For a committee that's already been formed and has been doing stuff, obviously.
Health agents, okay, that's what I'm
So to answer your question and your concerns, Selectmen Gulat, Mr. Pilling was always on it. I, I don't know where it got confusing or why.
And he's a voting member, so next week's meeting he can
And I've always thought he should be on it.
So seemingly then, the Stormwater Committee has nev, has not had all this time a Board of Health representative.
Well, that's what it sounds like.
Even though two members of the Board of Health Department are serving, yeah.
Correct, 'cause they were never, 'cause Mr., 'cause they were two, but Mr. Piers was plan, I feel like we just, I'm proud of us. That was confusing.
I'm not.
Wasn't it? That was super confusing. I'm proud of us.
I did, I did have to use a pen and paper.
I did have to write some notes. There's a little bit of a whodunit there, but we figured it out.
I counted on my fingers. I did it all.
That was like a Sudoku I was running in my brain.
Okay, the six members, when the person from the planning board, when she left employment, the committee went to six members. She was the planning board rep. Mr. Piers was the Board of Health rep. Mr. Pilling was the health agent. So, that was the seven-member committee. So when the person from the planning board left, Mr. Piers said, since I'm on the planning board, I will represent the planning board and Mr. Pilling can represent, if you will, the Board of Health, health agent, okay? Right now, we've appointed, um, Mr. Reins from the planning board, which automatically, we did not remove Mr. Piers from the Stormwater Committee. He went back to represent the Board of Health. Mr. Pilling said, I'm willing to stay on the committee even if I don't vote. And what I said was, we need that seventh voting member. That's where the confusion came in. We have a seven, when we appointed Mr. Reins, it made the seventh member. The only confusion was, Mr. Pilling was holding two, if you will, representing the Board of Health and acting as the health agent. When Mr. Piers was no longer on the planning board, we did not remove him from the Stormwater Committee.
Okay.
But you can't have, you can't have the, so it's Mr. Pilling serving two roles?
Can I interject real quick?
I think we still need a Board of Health.
We've got one more minute on this, because I, like, it's confusing me again. I'm getting, I felt like I understood it and now I'm going backwards, so. Mr. Pilling's on it, we're all in agreement. Mr. Piers was doing the double duty thing. So it sounds like what we need is
No, the opposite. Todd was double duty.
Okay, I don't, at this point, Selectmen Gulat, I gotta be honest, I don't care who was doing double duty, someone was doing double duty and they're not gonna be doing it anymore, 'cause they're gonna have seven people, right?
Right.
Okay, perfect. So what are we gonna do, Madam Administrator?
Well, we voted to recognize, we voted to recognize Mr. Piers' role. Was that the last motion I made?
No, you didn't make a motion, but if you want to, you can.
Yeah, but I still think you need a letter from the Board of Health. I mean, I'm sure they'll say Tom, but
Just saying that
Why don't we dress us at the
The Board would recognize and appoint Mr. Piers as the Board of Health.
That was the motion and it was seconded. This has all been under discussion.
So I'm not gonna second that, 'cause I really think we need
Are you rescinding your second?
I'm not even sure we got to this.
Yes, it was definitely
I am rescinding my second.
Do you
Just so we get clarification at our next meeting from the Board of Health, I assume.
With a letter just saying like, yes, Mr. Piers serves, can, you know, we want him to serve on the, or continue serving on whatever the verbiage.
Just for further, I wanna say clarification.
We've got a Stormwater Committee meeting coming up. We have got, we, the committee, not Nancy Gulat, single, we have got to get that MS four wrapped up. I need the committee. Mr. Piers has already contacted me and said, what can I do? I said, I've met with Mr. Ferry. We've done as much as we can. I'm hoping to meet with Mr. Pilling tomorrow to do some more. The MS four is not a one-person report. That's why I was trying to get this clarified from the last meeting we had on these two members. Both of these gentlemen are key to wrapping up the MS four.
Do you have any idea when the Board of Health is meeting next? Tomorrow night? Oh, they've already posted. This isn't on it. Well, we can request an emergency meeting. Okay, so, or an emergency revision or something. It's not great, but
You can change the agenda.
My thought is, well, you, you're supposed to do it sparingly.
Yeah, this is sparingly. This is sparingly.
So I would say that you vote, if you are so inclined, to select Mr. Piers to continue as the Board of Health rep, but have in your motion that it's pending Board of Health recommendation of the same. And that way, you're not holding up anything. I understand.
I get the sense of urgency and like, I, I understand and like, no one should have to do a grant by themselves, but I just feel like
This is, this isn't the grant.
This is the permit.
This is the report. It goes to the EPA.
So I'm just saying like
The grant is nothing compared to this.
So all I'm saying is, there's work to be done and I just feel like we're just trying to figure, figure out what happened. It's like, I don't mean it as like a, well, that, that's not, person isn't needed. I know they're needed. But I just like, don't wanna act without knowing that. That's awesome.
Yeah, no, I think you can say that, you know, you're appointing Tom Piers pending the recommendation of the Board of Health and we'll ask them to amend their agenda.
Or pen, pending like, um
Mrs. Gulat, is it your
Yeah, confirmation.
Mrs. Gulat, is it your understanding that Mr. Piers is not on the committee at this moment?
No, I have a seven-member committee. The only, the only position I am trying to clarify is the position of Mr. Pilling. Mr. Pilling was one person who held two positions and he had one vote, okay? So Mr. Piers is now taking back one of those positions, which quite frankly, he gave to Todd.
But he can't, he can't do that if he was serving.
Can we hold on? I don't like using this, but I'm getting frustrated. So we're going backwards. So the way that it was just presented was, Mr. Piers was doing double duty, someone left the planning board. He was do, he was Board of Health, excuse me, someone left the planning board and then he was doing both. That's the way it was presented. I've always understood Mr. Pilling to be on it, so there's no confusion for me. Maybe I'm the only one. I don't, I feel like I might be the only one that's confused.
Okay, when, when the person who represented the planning board left, we did not come back to the Board of Selectmen and ask you to appoint someone else. Instead, Mr. Piers, who was on both the Board of Health and the Planning Board said, and the Stormwater Committee said, I'll be the planning board rep and let Todd do the Board of Health. That was never voted by this board. That was never submitted by the Board of Health. It just happened. It just so happens now, and it's continued that way until Mr. Pa, excuse me, Mr. Piers left the Planning Board. He came back to the position he was originally appointed to by the Board of Selectmen.
But he can't like kind of do that. Like, there's a few things that didn't happen that should have happened that would have avoided all of this, just by, you know, a simple vote. So I feel like when you do your appointments every year for everybody, if it's specific to you're gonna serve on Stormwater because you're the building commissioner, not because you're Jim Aguirre, but because you're the building commissioner, that role needs to be voted on. And so I believe we do this with the, I don't have the documents in front of me, but I believe we do this with the Stormwater Committee, that it's recognized that Mr. Piers was the planning board member. Now he's not, because he's no longer on the planning board. He would need a vote to get back onto the committee. He's not just there. If you don't need any votes for the MS four permit, he can totally work on it, because he's a Board of Health member. Irregardless of, if, I don't know if you need any votes on it. I'm not sure where you are in the process, but I think he could still do the work if he's willing. And then we could appoint him next, or you could do what I've suggested, appoint him pending the affirmation of the Board of Health. So you have a couple of options.
Sure, sure.
I think it's been interesting to listen to this dialogue. My appointment to the Stormwater Committee does not say that I'm representing any one particular board. So I think that there's truth to what you're saying. I think Mr. Piers still has an appointment to the board, which you all approved back in July. And I don't know that it's specific to any one Board of Health or Planning Board. I don't see his appointment, but I know mine doesn't say anything of the sort. So I think he, you are right, he's still a member of the Stormwater Committee unless it's retracted by this, by the Board of Selectmen. So it seems to me like we would have the votes and we also have to look at the tree and see if any cleanup needs to be done from here going forward.
So I'm actually not saying that, so I just thought, so I think, I think yes, cleanup needs to be done. And that's all I'm, I'm looking to fix some case, because
Clarification.
We have one more. It's already eight thirty. I said we were gonna be done by eight thirty.
In the beginning, when the Stormwater Committee was established, we specifically mentioned jobs, but not people.
Okay, yes, that's my
The reappointments do not indicate to those, it just so happens, obviously. We don't say we're gonna appoint the building commissioner. We just say, we're gonna appoint the following, reappoint the following to the Stormwater Committee. Dun, da, dun, da, dun, da, that's it. It was only when the committee was initially set up that we said, it's gotta be this, 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 this.
But if Mr. Aguirre left us tomorrow and we had a new person, that new person, I'm assuming, would serve on the Stormwater Committee, right? Whoever filled the shoes?
So, I don't wanna be a dead horse, but did we reappoint Mr. Piers in June, beginning of July, to the Stormwater Committee? And secondly, he left the planning board last June. Why all of a sudden this, this now an emergency on this? Why wasn't this brought to our attention before? If we, if we reappointed him last June, beginning of July, and he's on, he's on the committee and the board, the Stormwater Committee can clarify who represents who and you want to bring it to our attention?
It does not say, 'cause I, I have a visual memory and I'm thinking back to the appointments. It just says Stormwater Committee and it hasn't, it doesn't say
That's why it's clarified. Again, when we set the committee up, we've mentioned job titles, not names, 'cause we know that it'll change.
Yeah, just, yeah, okay.
We know that the membership people, names will change, but we wanted those particular departments represented. And yes, you're right. We're both right, because following that, every succeeding appointment has been a person's name and it's to the committee. And we haven't said they're representing thus and so. It came up because Mr. Pilling questioned his, his placement on the committee. Quite frankly, based on what you're saying tonight, I've got a seven-member committee and he's a voting member.
Correct. So basically, we just argued for thirty minutes to figure out, we don't have to do anything, so we're gonna move on.
Well, we could've done that at the last meeting.
But that's for two. Discuss? Yeah, well, that, this wasn't on the agenda, 'cause I didn't put it on here, so I'm just dealing with what was on here. Discuss membership for the Municipal Building Study Committee. So I didn't request this beyond there. Is there something?
We don't have, we, I don't believe, we haven't got a vote of the numbers, so it has
Oh, okay, did we know? I thought we chose, we may not have voted, but we definitely discussed, I thought, five or seven.
We discussed it and then I have names written here, but there's no
Oh, those were just, I just said they would be, they would serve well.
So, is there seventh, or do we
You're right, we didn't vote. I think we tentatively agreed. Do we wanna hold on?
Because we have to do the same thing that you're doing with the Human Rights Committee.
Yes, correct. Yep, and we did, you're right.
But I think we did also discuss that it makes sense not to give you more work, but it makes sense to have the Building Commissioner slash Facilities Management Office represented on the committee.
Correct.
And I requested to be on there as well, so.
And Rob, I remember it was
Okay, so I also have Dennis McGee.
Vote.
Yes, you're right.
Oh, maybe
And Mr. McGee, those were before, those were before.
So we'll reach out to them and then we'll, um
But do you wanna vote on, we need to vote, I think.
Need to vote on the numbers, right?
Yeah, we should vote on the numbers. Yeah.
Your recommendation is?
I like seven for Building Committee.
I'll make a motion that the Municipal Building Committee have seven members.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it and that motion passes. And then at a future meeting, Madam Administrator, you can check with just the, the names, obviously not you, but like with Mr. Rendon and just see if they're interested. And then if not, we can reach out to maybe someone else on the phone. Okay. Anything else?
None, I'm sorry, no, none of them.
No, it's okay. Under Selectmen's reports, report on MMA meeting, Selectmen Gulat.
They moved it a, a week away, so there's no report. And I'm returning looking at the score bracket.
Okay, so we'll put this on for next time? Okay, perfect. Mrs. Brady, Selectmen Gulat will give an MMA meeting report at our September twenty-fifth meeting. Under correspondence, we did receive a thirty-dollar donation to Primetime. And as always, we turned them over to the town accountant Um, and as always, we turn them over to the town accountant and deposit them in the Primetime gift and donations account. Do we wanna entertain motions to acknowledge this?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I hope that we acknowledge receipt of a donation, the amount of thirty dollars to the Primetime gift account.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it and that motion passes. And we also have correspondence from Dyton Police Department regarding a donation, and this is from Chief McDonald, dated September eighth. On August twenty-eighth, the Father's House Family Church Incorporated made a generous donation in the amount of five hundred dollars in support of the Dyton Police Department. On behalf of the Dyton Police Department, this donation is greatly appreciated. So, I will entertain motions to acknowledge this donation from Father's House Family Church.
I'll make a motion that we acknowledge the donation from the Fa- Father's House Family Church, uh, donation five hundred dollars in support of our Dyton Police Department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I just wanted to say thank you very much. We appreciate that, especially during this difficult time. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion passes. Just for future, no, I think those go under acknowledgements usually. Anyway, moving right along to minutes, approval of the minutes for the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of August twelfth, twenty-twenty?
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say, if you didn't have a question. Oh, it's no, okay, I know.
I already asked that question, so.
Okay, alright. Just making sure. I, something felt weird to me. I didn't check in. Um, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion passes. And except for review, the minutes of the joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Library Board of Trustees of July thirtieth, twenty-twenty, the Board of Selectmen's dangerousness hearing of August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, and the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of August twenty-sixth.
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it and that motion passes. Approval of the warrants, Selectman Goulart?
Mr. Chairman, I hope that the following warrants be approved. Ten A dash twenty-one, in the amount of a hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and seven dollars, forty-eight cents payroll. Ten B dash twenty-one, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars, fifty cents, dated September second, accounts payable, will be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it and that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I hope that the following warrants be approved. Eleven A dash twenty-one, in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars, sixty cents payroll. Eleven B dash twenty-one, in the amount of a hundred and forty-seven thousand, seventy-six dollars, eleven cents, accounts payable. And eleven C dash twenty-one, brace yourself, one million, three hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars, fifty cents. All D, uh, all dated September ninth, be approved.
I second.
There was gonna be a delay. I'm like, has he, he's, he's picking up his mouth after, uh, up the floor.
Well, I wanna be delayed through, that's so.
Of course, that's true. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion passes. And do we have any, um, phone calls, emails, Zoom friends?
Any public input?
I don't think so. She usually lets me know, you know, what she wants.
Okay.
Um, hearing no further public input, I will entertain motions to enter into, uh, executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, Number three, to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares I do. Clerical, you mean, negot, contract negotiations?
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion passes. Roll call?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much. Andrew gets a list.